Good afternoon. The Board Workshop and Shade Meeting of the Manatee County School District will come to order. Unfortunately for all of you that are comfortably seated, we will be moving into a Shade Meeting once the room is cleared with the exception of... Do I have the list of attendees for the Shade Meeting? I don't see a list of attendees. So just the Board and Mr. Kelly and the General Counsel for the District and General Counsel for the Board will stay. The remainder will need to leave the room. And Deputy Superintendent Serrana and Saunders.
Mr. Chair, can we ask the media to make sure their cameras aren't running while they're out of the room, please?
For the media and attendants, if you would ensure that your cameras are turned off, you don't have to take them with you, but just make sure that they're not recording the meeting. The lounge is open on the second floor. We take cash. Somehow my microphone seems further away. The board workshop will come to order. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved in second and all in favor? Aye. All right, I'm going to keep my remarks very brief because as you know, we have a rather lengthy workshop agenda today. We had how many commencements in the past? So six high school commencements. Thousands of hands shook and congratulations. And so job well done, Dr. Green. We had, let's see, Harvard, Yale, Naval Academy, a few other military academies, many, many FSU, UF, and UCF, and USF, but a large number of FSU and University of Florida. So congratulations to all the grads and their parents and to our faculty for all their support. With that, Madam Vice Chair, do we have public comments?
We do. Since a couple of them, I don't believe have made public comment before, I'm just going to go through the article. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the Superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the Superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. This is the business meeting of the school board, and the public expects we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The Board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments, on agenda items, or during the public comments section. And with that, Ms. Scheich, you are first, and then Mrs. Mendel.
I want to speak on the new superintendent search. I would hope that you're going to do a nationwide search. We have a very attractive offering for these people. We have... We do not have any financial strapping, and we also have a great climate. The last time we did that, we had thirty, over thirty applicants. And what they did at that time, most of your board members weren't here, only Dave Minor was, but they had a citizens committee of about fifteen people from all various parts of the county. And that citizen committee actually narrowed them down to five, and those were the five that the Board interviewed. The process worked really good. The committee worked very hard on it, and I would like you to consider doing that for the next search. It takes the politics out of it, and it also might relieve staff who are at the same time installing a new computer system.
Thank you. Mrs. Mendel is next, but I do not see her in the room. Then Lee Chase, and after Lee Chase will be David Morgan.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to speak on the guardianship, the guardian program. I just want to say that I know, from what I've read and heard, there's so many rumors going around that it was more phased towards ex-police or people with military experience. I work at Blake Hospital. I've seen a lot. I wanted to have it as an open mind that everybody, regardless of what kind of a background they have in security or law enforcement, that they should be considered. This isn't... A lot of things have changed over the past thirty years. We have a lot more drug issues in schools, or just in general, there's a lot of drugs, there's a lot of fighting, and with these mass shootings that are going on. And I just want to have it as a plain, as a good playing field that is just not going to be pushed towards retired or ex-military. There's a lot of good security officers out there that would die for an opportunity to do this. I think every school should have at least one officer that can handle the issues as far as security. It shouldn't be just towards the elementary schools. It should be towards middle schools, high schools. That's where most of things are happening. I feel that there should be at least maybe, I don't know what you're looking for, at least two security guards as well as an officer. I heard that also too, that the security would not be able to make arrests, or which I think is going to be an issue because you have students that are just going to look down to them and say, hey, you can't do anything, see you later. We should be, they should be able to detain the individuals and in their report, written rep, have a written report done so it can be changed down to the officer, and the officer can make the decision whether to pursue it, or it wasn't enough to go on and release it and do what the school resource officer should be doing. My biggest feeling is, you know, in the industry that I'm in, is the students will look down to you. I mean, we have people at the hospital that look down to us saying, hey, you can't do anything. And I think that's a wrong approach. Like I said, this is, this is, you know, this isn't thirty years ago where we didn't have these problems, and it's just, it's, right now, we're just seeing the beginning of it. It's going to get a lot worse, and, I mean, a bunch of my friends, which I go, I'm an advocate shooter, we go shooting as much as possible, and this is just the beginning. And it's going to get worse, and we need to be able to contain it as best as possible. And, thank you.
Thank you. David Morgan?
They asked me if I was speaking, but it's on the workshop of the zoning.
There's only one public comment period during the workshop, so if you want to speak on...
It was a miscommunication with the guy. He's a presenter. I'm a presenter.
Oh, I got it, okay. So you're going to come up in a few minutes, and we're going to hear your whole spiel anyways. I can't wait. Okay. All right, then we're good. Thank you. That was it. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We will now move on to the development of the attendance zone for Dr. Mona Jane Middle School. And Don Sauer, you are on deck, onboard.
Thank you.
And so Danny, your assistant pick?
Yes, Mr. Lundin is my assistant for today.
Okay. You're ready to hand off that baton. This is your trial run, right?
It is my trial run.
Well, we'll go easy on you.
Oh, no, don't do that. You didn't go easy on Danny. Don't go easy on me. If I could have Nick in the back to go ahead and start the PowerPoint, but as we get started, I just want to go over what we did. On the 25th, we had our first organizational meeting, right after the Board approved it on the 22nd, I believe, for Mona Jane Middle. We then, on April 26th through the 10th, had our individual committees. Last Tuesday, the groups reconvened with the Superintendent and gave their presentations to the Superintendent, which puts us here at the Board Workshop today as they present to you. And then in June, we are going to go and bring it back to the Board through the public hearing for a Board vote, but that was the timeline that we had set out. We'll skip the picture of the new school since it's not up on the monitors. Yes. Oh.
So the communications, Mr. Sauer is taking over the job upon his retirement in, what a week?
Three days.
Three days, three days, three days Friday?
Unfortunately, he said the Wi-Fi is not connecting, so we'll go ahead and, the copy of the PowerPoint is in the back if anybody would like it. If not, if there's not enough, or if you'd like one, just please see me afterwards, and I'll go upstairs and I'll clean them and make sure that you get a copy of the PowerPoint. I got to switch it right back. There we go. I believe he said he might have gotten it. No? Okay.
We have it, so why don't you go ahead and continue, and then maybe he can get caught up with you.
Okay, absolutely. All right, so what I would like to do is invite Mr. David Morgan up. He was the head of Committee A, and he's going to go ahead and explain to you the process that they went through to come up with the plan that they came up with.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan, and thank you for your service. I'm sure you had a lot of fun.
Oh, yes, fun, fun. So first, was a pleasure to be able to do something like that. We really appreciate it as the public to, it gets opened up and worked with some really wonderful people, parents, teachers, administration. It was really nice. What Mr. Sauer in the initial, you know, laid out to us was some guidelines to, you know, numbers we want to try to achieve and obviously, you know, alleviate some of the overcrowding. So, you know, we took some natural borders when we first started of where Jane was located for geographic purposes, and we kind of started off with sixty-four and seventy, and as you can see, we kind of stuck with that. going around that it was more phased towards ex-police or people with military experience. I work at Blake Hospital, I've seen a lot. I wanted to have it as an open mind that everybody, regardless of what kind of a background they have in security or law enforcement, that they should be considered. This isn't, a lot of things have changed over the past thirty years. We have a lot more drug issues in schools or, just in general, there's a lot of drugs, there's a lot of fighting and with these mass shootings that are going on. And I just want to have it as a plain, as a good playing field that it's just not going to be pushed towards retired or ex-military. There's a lot of good security officers out there that would die for an opportunity to do this. I think every school should have at least one officer that can handle the issues as far as security. It shouldn't be just towards the elementary schools, it should be towards middle schools, high schools, that's where most of things are happening. I feel that there should be at least, maybe, I don't know what you're looking for, at least two security guards as well as an officer. I heard that also too, that the security would not be able to make arrests or, which I think is going to be an issue because you have students that are just going to look down to them and say, hey, you're, you can't do anything, see you later. We should be, they should be able to detain the individuals and in their report, written rep, have a written report done so it can be changed down to the officer and the officer can make the decision whether to pursue it or it wasn't enough to go on and release it and do what the school resource officer should be doing. My biggest feeling is, you know, in the industry that I'm in, is the students will look down to you. I mean, we have people at the hospital that'll look down to us saying, hey, you can't do anything. And I think that's, that's a wrong approach. Like I said, this is, this is, you know, this isn't thirty years ago where we didn't have these problems and it's just, it's, right now, we're just seeing the beginning of it. It's going to get a lot worse and, I mean, a bunch of my friends, which I go, I'm an advocate shooter, we go shooting as much as possible and this is just the beginning. And it's going to get worse and we need to be able to contain it as best as possible. And, thank you.
Thank you. David Morgan?
They asked me if I was speaking, but it's on the workshop of the rezoning.
There's only one public comment period during the workshop, so if you want to speak on-
It was a miscommunication with the guy. He's a presenter.
I'm a presenter.
Oh, I got it, okay. So you're going to come up in a few minutes and we're going to hear your whole spiel anyways, I can't wait. Okay. All right, then we're good. Thank you, that was it. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We will now move on to the development of the attendance zone for Dr. Mona Jane Middle School. And Don Sauer, you are on deck, onboard.
Thank you.
And so Danny, your assistant pick?
Yes, Mr. Lundin is my assistant for today.
Okay. You're ready to hand off that baton. This is your trial run, right?
It is my trial run.
Okay. Well, we'll go easy on you.
Oh, no, don't do that. You didn't go easy on Danny, don't go easy on me. If I could have Nick in the back to go ahead and start the PowerPoint, but as we get started, I just want to go over what we did. On the twenty-fifth, we had our first organizational meeting, right after the board approved it on the twenty-second, I believe, for Mona Jane Middle. We then, on April twenty-sixth through the tenth, had our individual committees. Last Tuesday, the groups reconvened with the superintendent and gave their presentations to the superintendent, which puts us here at the board workshop today as they present to you. And then in June, we are going to go and bring it back to the board through the public hearing for a board vote, but that was the timeline that we had set out. We'll skip the picture of the new school since it's not up on the monitors. Yes. Oh.
So the communications, Mr. Sauer is taking over the job upon his retirement in, what a week?
Three days.
Three days, three days, three days Friday?
Unfortunately, he said the Wi-Fi is not connecting, so we'll go ahead and, the copy of the PowerPoint is in the back if anybody would like it. If not, if there's not enough or if you'd like one, just please see me afterwards and I'll go upstairs and I'll clean them and make sure that you get a copy of the PowerPoint. I got to switch it, right back. I believe he said he might have gotten it. No?
We have it, so why don't you go ahead and continue and then maybe he can get caught up with you.
Okay, absolutely. All right, so what I would like to do is invite Mr. David Morgan up. He was the head of Committee A and he's going to go ahead and explain to you the process that they went through to come up with the plan that they came up with.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan, and thank you for your service. I'm sure you had a lot of fun.
Oh, yes, fun, fun. So first, was a pleasure to be able to do something like that. We really appreciate it as a public to, it gets opened up and worked with some really wonderful people, parents, teachers, administration, it was, it was really nice. What Mr. Sauer in the initial, you know, laid out to us was some guidelines to, you know, numbers we want to try to achieve and obviously, you know, alleviate some of the overcrowding. So, you know, we took some natural borders when we first started of where Jane was located for geographic purposes and we kind of started off with sixty-four and seventy and as you can see, we kind of stuck with that. It kind of made a nice natural border with Brayden River and Nolan at the south and Hale at the north of those borders. And then with Johnson not having his own zone, things got a little difficult up here, but we did the best we could with trying to achieve those numbers we were looking for and still try to make as much geographical sense and keep the kids as, you know, neighborhoods, not splitting up friends and so forth and so on. So that's how we kind of came up with our territory. One kind of a, I don't know if I want to use the word strange, but a change that we did do that was outside of just zoning Jane was we took Summerfield, it was split in half and we took and moved it into Brayden River. The reason in our thinking behind that was, when we started looking at capacities, when we had zoned it for Jane, we lowered Brayden River's capacity and when we looked at Brayden River's territory, there's some growth room there, but not as much as some of the other schools. So we wanted to alleviate a little bit of Nolan because we feel like there was some growth potential there for that Nolan area and put it into Brayden River because it was so low with the numbers, the way we, we moved them. The one outside of our, kind of our borders there was Greyhawk. We went with it, one, because even though it is north of that border, it is a true straight shot down almost into Jane and it currently, Todd, am I right, they're Gullet? It currently, they are go-to Gullet, which was literally straight across the street. So we just tried to keep kids that were going together to school staying with the same kids that we went for. That's why you had that one kind of, hey, why is it outside of the natural border we talked about? So that was kind of our thought process, that's how we got to where we were. And the only numbers within those guidelines that he set out for us that we did not achieve, but we felt very confident that it would achieve itself very quickly, was Jane starts off at a fifty-three percent of the lower socioeconomic, but we feel very confident that Jane's territory is not a true resemblance right now because there are some very large subdivisions in a affluent neighborhood of Lakewood Ranch that are due to open truly probably by the time the school opens and we feel like that number will drop pretty quickly to be right within those numbers. We were only two percent above what they had told us, but it left everybody else at some very nice, you know, numbers of what we were looking for to try to achieve. That's how we came to it. Do you have any questions as to how we went about it?
Mr. Kennedy?
What the socioeconomic status number, what numbers were you trying to achieve?
I remember fifty-one was our top, the bottom never was an issue, but what was the bottom?
Seventeen.
Seventeen was the bottom, so we were told to stay, try to stay between those guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Did we include parameters with regards to bus travel time, students on buses and transportation costs?
There was no, there was discussion within the committee about it, but there was no, we were never told there was a certain travel time that we needed to try to keep or anything of that nature. We, as Committee A, tried our best to do some of that. It got very difficult in this area of Johnson because Johnson doesn't have an area and as you can see, it was just like grab here, grab there, grab. We tried our best because anytime we grabbed some of those numbers, I mean, naturally, just giving it all to Jane would have really messed up some other people's numbers and messed up Jane's numbers as far as that lower socio. But we did have, transportation came into one of our meetings to give us any support.
So they may, they may have calculated it.
Yeah.
The, the portion for Jane, which you have, it's sort of isolated, is that in the northwest corner? And what was the reason for that?
It just, other than just grabbing to make the percentages work. We, when we first started, we took everything geographically and, and the way the program, the Excel spreadsheet that they put together for us worked is we just grabbed areas that they had marked off and we, we first, we just started with, we grabbed everything that just geographically made sense and we thought Jane should be here.
Right.
And we did that, as you can see, the high percentages, the last numbers are that lower socioeconomic or free reduced lunch.
Right.
If we grabbed all of those in the ninety, high ninety or whatnot percentiles, it, one, dragged or pulled these two schools, you know, immensely down and Jane was way, I mean, we, like I said, we ended with it higher than we would have liked, you know, within the parameter, but we were way off the track. So we ended up having to pick and choose back and forth to try to make our numbers work and we tried to just keep it as, as best we could.
Those were kind of like your outliers to reach some target.
Without, I mean, you know.
It looks like you've got, it looks like you have, what, three? You have, within a, probably a couple mile radius, maybe a little bit longer, you've got, you've got a cluster going three different directions.
That's true. And I mean, it, without Johnson having its own zone.
Right.
It, it just made it really difficult. I mean, if Johnson had a small zone, it's, it's not an issue, those kids could walk to each other.
Right. Okay.
But that's, that's where we came up with it. We would have preferred it a little bit different. I mean, obviously, I would prefer that swift, if the numbers were exactly the same, that would be great, but that was a smaller number of kids, so to make those percentages the way we needed them to line up within those parameters, that's what we had to do.
So if you weren't trying to reach a targeted mix by socioeconomic status, where was your committee before you adjusted it?
Pretty much using those natural boundaries and, and once you got to the river, it got pretty difficult, honestly. It didn't really matter, in my opinion, it didn't really matter where you sent them, it was going to be a long distance. Yeah, I mean, even at this point, Jane, I mean, it's not easy to get from here to Jane to Brayden River, really even to Hale. So, you know, but when we started, that's, that's what we kind of grabbed, we just took, the map doesn't show, but we stopped, I think it was Burner Road if I'm not mistaken, but we just grabbed that entire section that we had the ability to put it into Jane and started to manipulate Jane to where we wanted and then some other committee members had some thoughts and reasoning of the Gullet to put this into Jane.
And you were limited in the number of middle schools that were made available for redistricting?
Correct. We were only given Nolan, Brayden River, Hale as areas to pull from and then obviously Jane, but we had to make Jane.
And nothing to the west, Johnson?
Well, Johnson doesn't have a zone, but, you know, nothing would be king.
But we have schools to the west.
When we pulled that, those were, a lot of those kids are already zoned for Gullet, so it was a little below for them to go to Jane, that's why we pulled from the west.
Right, yeah, some of, like, thank you, some of what she was saying is when we started grabbing like here.
Could you come up to the mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry, some of that section there, it, it actually already zones to Gullet.
So, so those children are already going-
So those children are going to school across the street from the new building.
Like a football field away.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't, just got a question for saying, I just have a comment that I can, that I guess I can save for the final hearing, but I just want to give everybody a heads up now, I guess, is that I'm looking at right across State Route seventy from essentially Brayden River High and it's kind of just inside that two mile radius circle, there's a little, there's a couple streets right there which are right across State Route seventy. Is that, is that a traffic concern? Like, we don't want students crossing State Route seventy?
Are we talking about Rosedale?
I honestly don't know the name. No, no, if you could point where you were by the twenty and then come south, right there. They're right across State Route seventy, they're way closer to Brayden River than they are to Jane.
I believe this, am I wrong, Mr. Sauer, is this not the map that they changed to have, I think it was like one student?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's Brayden Pines is the neighborhood and there is a crossing guard there that is roughly Brayden Pines, I want to say no more than a thousand feet from Brayden River. I mean, it's right there.
Okay. But on this map, it's, it's districted to Jane, right?
Yes. That they, yes, they have that, it's these five students right here in Brayden Pines, Poly Hop, that would be going to Jane. They have to just north of seventy.
We didn't have, reasoning by that, we didn't have a way to split that apart.
Okay.
We naturally thought that children that can walk across the street should definitely go to a school across the street from it, but as far as, that also included what would be the new section of Rosedale back there, that when Forty-Fourth is finished, they'll be able to walk across the street to Jane.
Okay. You know, my concern was more about the kids who are like right on the north side of State Route seventy. So anyway, just a, an observation, it's not a question or demand or anything.
No, I agree to, with you because I know, as we went through this before, I mean, geographically, I mean, it, it appears awkward to be so close to a school yet you're going, you know, a distance away. But is that, that area down there, are they close enough to Jane that they're going to walk or are they going to take a bus?
Again.
So right below that twenty, that, where those five students are?
Brayden Pines is what we were going to zone for Brayden River.
Right.
Or keep in Brayden River.
Is that walking or bicycle distance?
Oh, definitely walking, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are they walking or bicycle distance to Jane?
By the two mile radius, yes.
Okay, so, so for whatever-
I mean, by the two miles, almost everybody here is within three schools. But, but we couldn't, as a committee, we were not able to break that section out. We would obviously want that to go to there. Our thought process is this portion of Rosedale that's about to be built and we were stuck with this group that as we were given, should go to Jane because it is across the street from Lake Ray, but not up to Jane.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, come on, Mr. Minor?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Verna, Verna Bethany and I know they have a lot of tomatoes on the east side of Verna- whoops. Okay, for, you know, the line that you have here goes down, it looks like kind of the middle of Verna Bethany, but, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how many homes are on the east side of Verna Bethany, but it's mostly agriculture, I know. And it, does this include both on the east and west side of Bethany for students, you know, going to Jane?
No, if, if you looked on the PowerPoint, the map. East of Verna Bethany is going Nolan or staying Nolan.
Okay.
West of Verna Bethany, that was our, our border that we, which was a minimal number of students on our, our little square. West of Verna Bethany was staying Jane, or going to Jane, east was staying Nolan.
Well, okay, you've addressed my question. I just wonder if we're going to have a bus, you know, going, you know, up and down on Verna Bethany and I think there is just Bethany, isn't it? I don't know. But in, in any event, why would we have kids who live just across the street from each other, you know, going to, you know, part, those on west going to Jane and those on east, you know, going to Nolan, it would seem like, you know, other than those that are right on the road, I can understand be going to Nolan, that would include Mayaaca and all of that, but it would, it would seem like those on the east side should be going to the same places those on the west side or west side going to the east side.
Again, the way we had it, we had to pick a square and it just was, got to a border that we needed students to go to Nolan and we needed students to go to Jane for capacity purposes, for low socioeconomic percentage purposes. And it was where our committee decided that we'll keep these in Nolan and this will be our border.
Okay. It, it seems like it would cut down on transportation costs just to have one bus take care of that.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of-
And also having neighbors, you know, people who live across the street going to the same school would seem to make more sense to me.
Sure.
You made a comment in response to Mr. Minor's question about you had to have a Was there an attempt, I mean, most of these communities have pretty definitive boundaries. Do we have the ability first and then second, was there a consideration to draw the lines where rather than it being a square, you take a particular development, a particular community and allocate those communities to the schools as opposed to some of these other more prominent geographic boundaries?
Sure. For the most part, what we could see of the squares and knowing the areas, most of the squares were a, a community, I mean, Greyhawk, what would be Mill Creek or, or the several variations, Heritage Harbor. The squares we were given were basically communities. Now, to where, like Mr. Minor was talking about, not really community, Verna Bethany, so we just got what looked like a geographic square of this road to this road, north to south. And, and that's the numbers we went from. Now, we were able to ask and, and receive, you know, very quickly and easily of cutting what was not part of a square. When I mentioned we moved some, a, a community, which, I mean, when you get into Lakewood Ranch, communities get, I mean, they have to be broken up, but Summerfield was literally broken in half at, at the point when we saw it and we didn't have numbers, but they got them for us of, one part was going to Nolan, one part was going to Brayden River and they were able to break just a area that we drew out for them and tell us how many children are in it and what the numbers are. So we were able to do that for that portion of it and, and yes, we did take into consideration as much as we could of communities, keeping kids within subdivisions, going to all the same school and geographically the closest school possible.
But, but there was, but there was no definitive consideration for being able to walk to school versus having to take a district provided bus?
What we were explained to was, and you can see the circles, we were told that the circles were two mile radiuses of walking distance for transportation and we could not touch those two mile circles. And I chuckled because all of the circles are basically right on top of each other, so pretty much meant I couldn't touch anything. We were able to manipulate around that to a certain degree. I mean, look, if you look at the, south of Jane, north of Nolan and Brayden River, I mean, really those kids could go to any of, of those schools. So, but that's what we were told was that two mile radius was the walking distance and we could not touch that if no other school was already impeding upon that two mile circle.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. This is, you know, fun, hard, you know, subject to all sorts of criticism, it's almost as bad as being on the board, but we thank you for, for doing this. I have a prejudice toward trying to keep communities, you know, together and that's what I was talking about, Verna Bethany and the Bethany Baptist Church up there is kind of a center of activities and to have that, you know, part of, you know, what's across the street there that you have going for Jane, you know, I'm inclined, like I said before, to, you want to keep all of those along Verna Bethany Road, you know, together at least north of seventy. That's obviously it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Now, are we ready for?
I just asked, oh, yeah.
Welcome.
What was the rationale, I'm sorry, what was the rationale you were giving for not touching anything inside the circle?
We were told that was a transportation walking zone, so they would not have, they would not have a bus route per se?
Yeah, it was for visual purposes. The actual walking zone that the computer creates goes from the student's home. The, the actual walking zone that the computer creates goes from the student's home to the school, but to be able to put that on a map, we wouldn't be able to do it. So what, we just, we drew a two mile radius. When transportation gets the plan that the superintendent puts forward, they will create that walking zone and then that is the pattern that then is created for the school.
But, but you should be able to put that on a map.
Yeah, you, you can, but it, then it just destroys everything.
It's a little more work.
But, but not that much, but it just destroys everything.
You just do a scatter plot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if the speakers would remember, in order to have a clean recording, if you would, when you're speaking, if you would come up to the microphone.
And for Committee B, I'd like to introduce Jennifer McManus.
Welcome, Ms. McManus.
Good afternoon. I'm a teacher at Nolan, so this is my first experience on a rezoning board and it was very interesting. Thank you for the opportunity. So I, we had on our committee several teachers that served at Brayden River, Hale and Nolan. We had- We had some parents, assistant principal and principal, that we all kind of brainstormed together. Our map looks somewhat similar. Our reasoning for the Greyhawk community, which is north of sixty-four, is because those kids, like we said earlier, are already zoned for Gullett. And so this is the Mona Jane is the neighboring school. And we felt a lot of the parents, they are preferred to go to Mona Jane. In fact, I think one of our committee members did an informal survey in that area and so from what we gathered from that survey, there was a push for being zoned for Mona Jane. Our reasoning for leaving the green zone all the way on that other side for Nolan, we at Nolan have a very successful agriculture program and we are getting a lot of those students from that area because they're coming from that rural environment. And there was a concern that, you know, they, that that program's already successful and it wasn't completely there if Mona Jane would have an agriculture program. So we left that in to be zoned for Nolan. Our main motivation for zoning the way we did was also the socioeconomic status of each school. And we really tried to balance out some of the percentages. And we ended up with a percentage for Mona Jane of thirty-five percent, which we felt was really nice for new school as opposed to Nolan with twenty-nine percent. Hale is now at fifty percent and Brayden River was at fifty-eight. We lowered it to fifty-seven. Hale went up from forty-five to fifty percent and Nolan went also up from twenty-seven to twenty-nine percent. So we felt like we wanted to balance the schools. That was pretty much our main motivation. We also considered the walking circle, the two mile radius that we were just talking about. And we chose the Mill Creek community right up here to be zoned for Mona Jane as well in an effort to lower the socioeconomic status. If we would have left it in for Hale, it would have gone up for Mona Jane a little bit.
Mill Creek or Country Creek?
I wouldn't say that, too.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy. Mike, Mike, Mike.
But Mill Creek, Mill Creek is where it says one hundred and twenty-four slash twenty slash sixteen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure we're.
We became very familiar with that area.
So that was kind of the reasoning and they were already taking a bus, so if they're gonna be bused there or here, that was not a consideration. And then we took also, we we, the other directive we were given was to lower all the schools' attendance so that we possibly could open up school choice again. So we did the yellow square over from Brayden River and brought that to Mona Jane, just to kind of lower Brayden River's attendance. But for the most part, it it looks pretty similar to map A.
Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Ms. McManus. First, our, this is just kind of a question for the superintendent. Given the school's not gonna open until 2019 and housing units already on the way, if we overlay projected houses that will be occupied by 2019, are will there still be an opportunity for school choice, you believe? My my thinking being, it's growing so fast, by the time the school opens, it's gonna be full again anyway. I'm just not sure if we, I'm just curious if we have projected that out or we've overlaid those to Dr. Gray.
Yes, we have projected that out. It'll be limited. The area is growing faster than we are building. It'll be very limited, but that's what the committees are attempting to do, to give an opportunity.
Mr. Minor?
Well, I was just reflecting to myself that it seems like we're always playing catch-up, but we're doing a good job, but it's, it seems like the people putting up homes are, you know, one step ahead of us. But I thank you for your plans and it takes into account, you know, growth all over the place and I admire your your efforts to save some room in all the schools. Thank you. And the other thing, I noticed on your plan, I was talking about, you know, Verna Bethany, you keep that together. And I guess it's not on the map, but it goes all the way to to Soto County. And so that that is, you know, providing, you know, a source for the ag program in Nolan, which is very good. I think that's part of the, you know, thinking in here. East of, going to the east seems gonna be developed pretty quick and little ag development along that line, although I'm I'm sure there'll still be plenty of young girls and young boys who have their cows and their chickens and God bless them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you teach at Nolan?
Science at Nolan.
Great. And would you go through this experience again?
Absolutely.
Great.
I think our committee worked well together and I had heard some horror stories before, but none of that came true. We really worked well together.
It must have been your leadership.
Well, the first first meeting, we actually came up with a different map, but we weren't confident with that and so we decided to come back a second time and we really worked through it and worked through our differences and I felt we put the best product forward that we could, that we all felt good about.
What was the difference in this map and your first map?
The first map, we took a lot more from the upper part, from Hale, and that raised Hale's LS a lot more to fifty-five percent and we felt that wasn't really, you know, what we were trying to accomplish. But it's it was, it is difficult, I think, either way you want to put it. All all maps, in my opinion, have good, you know, positives and negatives. I think it's a matter of preference, but this is what we felt good about, this product.
Great. And how would you rate the administration's response to your request?
Good, I guess.
Great. Good answer. Good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. And finally, in Committee C, Kristen Cunningham.
Hi, I'm Kristen Cunningham. I am an instructional specialist with the district.
And I'm Bob Sloman. I'm an assistant principal at Hale Middle School.
Our team was really lucky. We really worked well together. We had representation from transportation and we also had a community member who works for the Department of Transportation. So he was enabled to enlighten us on a lot of the future roads that will be coming our way. First, we looked, we had that two mile radius for Jane and we, okay, thank you. My banner white. We have that two mile radius for Jane and we did include that section for Brayden River because it is part of Rosedale and we'd be breaking up a subdivision. Brayden Pines is different from that. It is directly across the street from Brayden River Middle School. It is just a crosswalk away. So but that isn't represented in that map. On the other side is that fifteen-five thirty-three, that is an apartment complex that's got a lot of growth coming. So we followed that seventy boundary and kept and put them in the two mile area for Jane as well. We also went ahead and went out to Verna. We didn't know that Jane would or wouldn't have a great ag program. So we wanted, we, with our Department of Transportation person, we know the roads that are going to be coming off of Lorraine and heading out that way. So we, it was a straight shot and the growth in that area is the is the kind of growth that we're looking at with Jane. Some of the roads have subdivisions on one side. Now, Verna does not have subdivisions. It is residential mostly on the east side and more agricultural on the west side. So we weren't breaking up any subdivisions with that. We took Greyhawk because those students do go to Gullett. So all of Mill Creek and Country Creek and west of Ry, or east of Ry Road goes to WIT and those two elementary schools are pretty tight, so we wanted to keep those kids together. That area that you were talking about, west of sixty-four, this is where our transportation people told us what we were looking at. As we have it now, Brayden River is the north side and they actually cross over the Hale students. They, whereas the Brayden River is the purple, so they're actually coming south and the Hale students are going north to go to their schools. When we looked at the LS numbers, that was what really drove our populations at Jane. But our transportation person is the one that drew our yellow line. She had the ins and outs of the apartments that are in that area and the communities that are in that area. So she went ahead and broke up that yellow area for us. The last thing we did is we carried the Jane circle all the way to the interstate. As of right now, there's only two underclassmen at Gullett that I think they're in kindergarten, but we wanted to keep them going to Jane as well.
Our final numbers that we had, Brayden River Middle School is gonna go down by one hundred and twenty-one students to one thousand and two. And they were going from fifty-eight percent LS to fifty-four. The reason we left them just over a thousand is if you look at the growth percentages that we were given, the other schools were projected at a seven percent growth, but Brayden River was a smaller percentage, only four percent growth. So with the limited amount of growth ability, we left their population a little bit higher. However, the others, Hale went from eleven ninety-five down to eight seventy-nine with a subtraction of one hundred and fifty-one students. And we went down two percent in LS from forty-five to forty-three. Nolan is down to eight hundred and ninety-seven, so they're minus sixty students and going actually up from twenty-seven to twenty-eight percent total. And then Jane is gonna start under our plan with seven hundred and nine total students at forty-seven percent LS.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell one more of the comments is for Jane again. How many seats will be available when it opens up at this point?
Yes, ma'am. The seats available is projected at one thousand one hundred and sixty-four, but we're enrolling them at seven hundred and nine, which would leave three hundred and thirty-eight students for growth within that inner circle, primarily in a circle, obviously the entire portion.
And most of Jane's circle is where the new developing is happening off of sixty-four, so that population is gonna grow very quickly.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, why don't we make the school bigger?
There's property out there.
Yeah, I just think it's ridiculous that we're making these schools so small to the point where before we even get finished building them, they're obsolete. Makes no, in business, we call it stupid, but in education, I guess we call it less than positive planning. I just don't get it. I mean, you know, it's a waste of money.
In line with that, what what is the projected date when these schools are gonna be at capacity?
Well, right now, Nolan, Brayden River and Hale are above capacity.
So 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 what is the date for that geographic area that we're projecting that all those middle schools are gonna be at capacity again?
With, I guess.
After the redistricting.
We looked at five years out in with our projection of that. The district grew by one hundred and fifty students last year, FTE, so it is almost none. So it could be longer. I know that there's huge developments that are planned out there, but they're also out there and the kids aren't here. So it, you know, that five year could go to ten year. It's when when are those homes gonna be developed?
So the minimum, the minimum horizon, you're setting at five years?
Yeah.
So in between five and ten?
Yes.
So let me get this right. What you're saying is it could be five years before these schools are at capacity?
That's, we just projected out.
All right.
And with our plan now, there is room for growth again at Hale and Nolan.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work.
Well, thank you very much for allowing the committees to come for you and present. I was involved with Committee B and just to watch them work and disagree with each other and then come to a common consensus was good. The one thing that we kept talking about is change and change is hard, but when we looked at the room, we were all the reason for the changes that are going on because we are all, most of us came from somewhere else here. So that, they really took a good piece of this and was trying to move forward, but thank you very much.
Okay, so are we at a point currently, technology and data wise, that that the board can be provided with a a schedule for each plan of time on buses? So number of students that will be bused? Number of students that can walk for each of the plans? The 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 total time students are anticipated to be on buses?
I'm gonna leave that to Mr. Harris.
No, you'll have to, you'll have to, I'm just, and then then the the transportation cost to the district for each of the committee plans.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy.
The, we're, we're pretty, we're obviously focused on Jane, Brayden River, Nolan. I'm curious about west Bradenton and central Bradenton.
Right, right. That's my thinking, too.
So, is this the time to bring this up?
No, I think it would be, yeah, because I think, I think once they set up the model in order to provide that, those analytics, they they should be able to run it for.
You know, I guess my my understanding of this was the, when we noticed this for public hearing, we we opened it up to the whole county so we can, and I'm not saying I have any, I have any ideas, but if one were to come up during public input period, which we're in, we would be in now up until the twenty-sixth of next month, that is available, correct? Okay, yeah, it's the entire county.
It's something up to everyone. Doesn't matter whether they're.
Every middle school. Okay. And then obviously there's the north of the river, now that Lincoln has no zone.
Right.
We, I mean Buffalo Creek's capacity number must be over two hundred percent now.
But there.
Well, that's why I bring it up, because I'm just wondering what our plan is.
Right, because originally, 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 we were, I think the original plan was all the middle schools were gonna be redistricted. And then we've narrowed it down to to this group, but.
Which which does make sense, but and and what I'm talking about is separate from from this conversation.
Where where we are, you, so you're suggesting it would be nice to know where we are throughout the district with regards to the middle schools.
Especially north of the river.
That's a different plan, but it will be shared with you.
But not today. Okay. But it's on our radar.
Yes, it's on the radar.
It's coming to us.
Please remember, you do have to remember that we have to submit a capacity plan to the state and we submitted. And you have to look at your empty seats. The district has different service areas and and one, we try not to have them impacting each other. We try not to cross those service areas as much as possible. And so the issue as it relates to north of the river is, we have an opportunity there, but it it requires more planning than just say, let's just redraw these lines and do this. Please, you also, that is why we did the land swap, because on that map, there's a future schedule for a K-eight as well as a new high school. So the the planning for the size of middle school. So the, the planning for the size of middle schools is more than, if you make it bigger, you can fit more students. It does have academic consequences. There are reasons we don't choose to go over a certain number uh for middle school. One, it becomes uh, you may have more students there, but you have to pick up more overhead because you need more administrators, you need more uh support staff. And so to keep in alignment of what we perceive or what research tells us is probably the right number of middle school students being in the same location, that's what we've tried to do. A lot of this has to do with social, emotional interaction. When you start making middle schools the same size as your high schools, that's where you're starting to create problems. And that is what drives the number or the size that we, that we put forth in building middle schools.
Thank you. Vice Chair Messenger.
First, I'm one of those natives that you're talking about. Uh, but um, kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Kennedy said, and it comes down to north of the river and um my understanding of clusters and that cluster, you can kind of pick and choose, but now all my friends out north of the river, I mean, they don't have, there's no other traditional public middle schools that are in their cluster. They have.
They haven't, they do, Hale is in that cluster, so they.
Hale is considered part of that?
Yes. Hale is part of the, it's Buffalo Creek, it used to be Lincoln, and Hale is in that cluster. So they can choose to go to Hale Middle School.
But it's been so overcapacity, they really couldn't.
That's been the issue. Uh, the well, we're going off into that topic.
Sorry, I just.
We believe that there is an opportunity. The board would have to be willing to think outside the box for the north of the, north river, I don't want to say north river because that equates to the high school, north of the river. That was gonna happen after we completed the decision for Dr. Mona Jane. I was going to present to the board, here's an opportunity, you need to think outside the box uh there for that section of the county.
My friends.
Your friends. That would make people happy, I believe.
Well, it's just, I mean, we, we say we're a county of choice and they don't really have much of a choice. And no, nothing wrong, Buffalo Creek is wonderful, but I wanna make sure there's choices.
Yes.
I think the, the administration has a proposal they've been working on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy retirement. We're gonna miss you. It's not like the military, we can't like call you back or anything like that? No? Okay. Mr. Sharona.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. We'll take a, we'll take a brief recess for just a couple of minutes. It's us not being projected.
Oh, okay.
And now you have a nice dividing, seventy-five over.
I'm just, I'm getting complaints, people are like, they want, they want the choice. No, you gotta throw it out there. Some people start right there. You do it sticks, I agree, that's what you do. No? Is that not how you function?
I, I don't wanna box them.
Oh. I think he had a cough.
Pardon me?
I think he had a cough. Or might have been a drink or something. I did not wanna get sick with, because of Mia. That's literally like, sweet, um, I get, I feel the energy of the people, but that's, I'm an extrovert, I am an extrovert, I see the effort. If I'm in a room full of people, I am happy. And there's a feeling when you go to graduation, it's a wonder. I watched, I was like, I missed that feeling this year, you know? I mean, I don't, shaking hands, but.
We will reconvene. Uh, Mr. Sharona.
I'm just trying not to catch your germs, don't think about.
Gotta watch out for Mia.
I know, I don't want, I don't want to take it home to my baby.
Thanks, sorry.
It's not gonna happen, so you have hard copies, so uh please refer to your hard copies and um we'll, we'll talk from there. Good afternoon, Superintendent, School Board members, staff, and audience. Uh, Dr. Sarah Brown's with me and uh Pat Bartholomew regarding the uh school safety guardianship program that we're bringing forward uh to you today. Under Senate Bill seventy-twenty-six, provides options for placing at least one school safety officer at each school at the beginning of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. As you know, our first choice was to continue our great relationships that we had with the county, city of Bradenton, Palmetto, and Holmes Beach um with the school resource officers. Uh, since the county did not approve that, we're going to Plan B. And uh we are still hopeful that the city of Bradenton and city of Palmetto will continue to work with our district uh for the safety and the security of our students and staff uh under our seventy-thirty proposal uh for the school resource officers. Home Beach is already committed to that plan. I gave a presentation to the city council of Palmetto last night and uh it was received very favorably. Uh, uh, the uh city attorney endorsed it, uh Chief Tyler endorsed it, and the city clerk also endorsed it. So it goes before their uh next city council meeting and hopefully uh they will uh pass that. And uh tomorrow morning, I'll be at the uh city council for the city of uh Bradenton and hopefully uh receive a, a warm welcome like I did with Palmetto last night. So with all that said, that brings us before you uh to seek approval to move forward with the school district of Manatee County's guardianship program to offer assistance to our local law enforcement agencies in protecting our students, staff, and anyone who visits our school and to provide a safe environment. So this afternoon, we're gonna go over the role and training of a school safety guardian, the organizational chart, the cost, recruiting, hiring, and job descriptions that this entails. Uh, and I'm sorry, the one gentleman left, but this is all controlled by statute. And so the school uh safety guardian is an armed position, uh but it is not a law enforcement position, and we can't emphasize that enough and we'll, and we'll continue to do so. This will really, really will ensure the safety and security and welfare of our students, faculty, and visitors at our, at all our schools. The school resource officer really has three main functions. That's law enforcement officer, the law-related counselor, and law-related educator. As you will note, the, the guy, the school safety guardian position is one that's going to necessitate and prevent or abate an active assailant incident at any of our schools. And so there is a big difference that we'll be going over uh with that between the two positions. Uh, there's also an extensive amount of training that's required and it, and uh as a former captain for the sheriff's office, I want Pat to kind of go over those specifics with you.
Good afternoon. I'm Pat Bartholomew, the security manager for the district. Uh, statutorily, they're gonna be required to complete one hundred and forty-four hours of comprehensive firearms safety proficiency during, during a criminal justice standard and training commission certified course, which is gonna be conducted by the Manatee County Sheriff's Office. As you can see, the bullet points below, how much uh training that is. What's significant about the eighty hour, eighty hours firearms training, uh they're gonna have to complete eighty-five percent proficiency. And that, that's, that's quite a, quite an amount compared to law enforcement officers right now when we have to qualify with eighty percent. So it's higher than what law enforcement officers are qualified to do right now. Sixteen hours of instruction in precision pistol, eight hours of discretionary shooting, instruction using approved simulator exercises, uh eight hours of instruction in defensive tactics, eight hours of instruction in active shooter or assailant scenarios, uh twelve hours of instruction in legal issues, and also twelve hours of diversity training. Uh, this is very challenging, uh, you know, to say the least. We're probably, we'll hire some people that might not complete this training. We're hoping that we do get a, a qualified pool of candidates and we do have the amount necessary to begin the school year, but from now until the school year, uh we're gonna be looking for those types of people and putting through the training and it's gonna be challenging, you know, to make sure we get all these people, you know, through the training and qualified.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Brown, excuse me one second. I just have, I just have a quick question about um the what, what makes a qualified applicant according to statute? So.
Makes a qualified applicant? Obviously, they can't be a convicted felon.
Well, that's what I was getting at. Obviously, there's, there's some sort of background check.
Yeah, yes, there's gonna be psychological background check, drug testing, uh normally, which you're going through almost as a law enforcement officer.
Yeah, a psychological evaluation.
Sure, okay.
It'll be our job description. They will be an employee of our school district, so they have to pass all the background, any other.
So every, everything, the school district employee would have to go through normally, um, plus the firearms training.
Yes.
Um. Plus the psychological val- valuation by a psychologist or psychiatrist.
I guess, I guess that's what I was getting at, to like when we hire.
To be a law enforcement officer, that's what you have to go through.
Yeah, sure, we already met, just so, we were gonna get to it later, but since you already jumped into that, we'll, we'll go into that. That's okay, Mr. Kennedy. We're used to it.
Problem child.
We, we already met with the sheriff's uh office. Sheriff Wells, matter of fact, and a couple of his senior leadership uh did come into the district. They will be performing, that's part of their job. They will be performing these psychological evaluations and they're gonna be doing all the training. Uh, they also uh alluded to the fact that there could be anywhere from twenty to forty to sixty percent failure rate based on the uh, the tactical training as well as the psychological. And so our duty, we have to start hiring now and we probably have to overhire just because we understand that there is going to be a failure rate.
It was, it was my understanding as um we went through the governor's workshops that the Florida Sheriff's Association in defining the requirements, it aligned with and exceeded the training and qualifications of a law enforcement officer. So it's what, ten to twenty percent more hours of the firearms training or something in the statutes. It's, they're required to have ten percent more, but not more than twenty percent more in one of the firearms areas. And then they also have to meet the psychological evaluation requirements for any uh law enforcement. Uh, Mr. Minor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was interested in your comment about they had to have eighty-five percent proficiency with respect to firearms training. What is proficiency in this firearms, yeah, training that you?
They're gonna shoot a course of fire that's uh defined by CJSTC. It's basically what a basic law enforcement academy recruit will go through, eighty hours of that uh training and the proficiency. Uh, they're gonna be going from uh three yards, seven yards, twenty-five yards, fighting, firing at the pistol range.
Okay, I didn't understand all of that, but it, it, it sounds as though part of it is uh being able to um identify and uh be able to uh successfully shoot somebody with your fire, fire.
In every, every block of this training, there's a particular uh criteria, what they're gonna be training on there. There's gonna be just eight hours of discretionary shooting. They're gonna be going over the legal aspects of training and use of force and all those types of things, so uh, yeah, every, every component of this, there is a, a reason for it.
Reasonable what, sir?
There's, the reason for this training is they have to qualify in these, in these um bullets right here, they're gonna have to qualify at every one of these, these bullets.
Bullet points.
Not the bullets, so it's me, but eighty hours of firearms training, sixty hours of instruction in precision pistol, that's uh performed by a qualified trainer by the sheriff's office who's conducting the training.
So, so would it be the eighty-five percent, you said the eighty-five percent proficiency?
Yes.
Compared to eighty percent?
That's correct.
Requirement for law enforcement officers. So I'm, proficiency means hitting the right target?
Yes.
Accurately, eighty-five percent of the time? Where, where the qualifications for a law enforcement officer is eighty percent?
Yes.
At twenty yards versus twenty-five yards, yeah, that's a huge.
That includes.
Mr. Cologne?
That includes proper threat identification, I would assume. Now, I do have one other question that hasn't been brought up. What about proper indemnification of these officers? God forbid there should be an incident and they're.
We're, we have our insurance carrier already looking at a policy.
So the sheriff's department is not gonna indemnify these gentlemen because they're not law enforcement?
They're correct, they're employees of the school district.
Which means the uh school district will be liable.
That's why we have insurance for that, yes.
Uh, well, uh, I'm not an attorney. Uh, we have attorneys here. I have uh yet to see an insurance policy that was large enough to cover uh shooting incidents, uh multiple shooting incidents. But uh I would insist that it be a very large insurance policy.
We'll be bringing that forward.
With specific caveats in it. So I'd like to see that. I think the board should see that at some point.
Oh, you will.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I have a follow-up?
Uh, back to Mr. Minor.
Um, okay, in terms of, you know, background checks, you know, checking in, verifying these employees, you know, of the district, is that something we're doing internally, farming it out, or who's, who's responsible? We've had some problems with that in the past, you know?
They, yeah, they'll be going through the same background checks, fingerprinting, drug testing, it's all our employees. They will be our employee. The sheriff's office is also giving us two of their officers to assist on the interview team. And so we'll be able to weed out individuals that they are keen on as far as officers that they would normally select to. So that would help. The biggest piece will be during the psychological exam to weed out other individuals in addition to the, the physical aspect. But yeah, that, they, we will be venting all that. That's part of our employment background checks.
We had a problem once upon a time, you know, about five years ago with representations on employment, you know, with this district not being verified. That uh caused some problems. And um I'm wondering, you know, as far as representations of having license uh in the investigation field, when in fact there wasn't any such license being made. And um I, I'm, so it's made me a little uh, you know, concerned, you know, about the extent that uh we investigate the representations on our applications.
We'll be venting all those through.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, when you say venting, I hope that's uh corroborating the claims that are in there.
Of course.
All right, thank you.
Sarah, you wanna go over the organization?
No, I'm okay. No, you can take me off, I'm okay.
Okay. Good, thank you.
We're just gonna quickly walk you through that. You'll see before you um is a organizational chart that would be proposed based on this legislation and these new positions, where we would ask that we are now going to move to having a director of safety and security with some clerical support. And then, of course, you would have a manager over our safety and emergency management that would also help to lead this effort because we would have two lead guardians. In other words, they would have oversight because we're looking to hire approximately thirty guardians. And so this would be splitting them fifteen and fifteen. You'll see that on the next uh rung down, if you will, if you look at this like a ladder, you'll see that the camera monitor, we already have a camera monitor, they would continue to do that work. And then we have the um we have the fifteen safety guardians and the fifteen safety guardians noted. Um, as you saw, the manager for safety and emergency management would move in under that, this jurisdiction. And um the last part down at the bottom is that we already currently have our district security officers that work with us now and they would continue to be under the, the safety um and security uh manager or director at this time. So we'll be providing you or in your packet. You also have the job descriptions and we'll be talking about those in just a minute, but that's, that's part of the organization chart.
And, and moving forward with the costs, as you know, the sheriff's office will be fifty-fifty.
And moving forward with the costs, as you know, the sheriff's office will be fifty-fifty as far as the SROs, they will continue with their current rate of employees and supervisors. We are hopeful that the cities of Bradenton, Palmetto, and Homestead Beach will go to the seventy-thirty split with their, their SROs, and then the remaining guardians will be headed, obviously, by the school district. So we're looking at a total of thirty-two SROs, approximately twenty-eight to thirty-two guardians, with the budget that's noted and the total cost being approximately three-point-four million dollars. The next slide will show the district portion of the safe school allocation, a little two-point-two million dollars, the general fund discretionary of one-point-three, and the current budgeted for everything around three-point-five, which leaves us in a funding deficit of one-point-two million dollars to move this program forward. The equipment, the guardian equipment, I'll have Pat address that too, because that-
Mr. Serrana? So this model leaves us with a deficit of one point, about one-point-two million?
Correct.
What was the deficit if we, if we engaged sheriff's deputies for the balance of the schools?
That was one-point-three, one-point-three million, a little over one-point-three million for the county's office.
Okay, so we're on the, so let me try to understand it. So we were looking, we were, if, if we, if we put sheriff's deputies in the unincorporated elementary schools, and the county only contributed what we received from them last year, it was a one-point-three million dollar deficit?
Yeah, their officers were a lot more expensive than what we're going to pay.
But it's a one-point-three million dollar deficit, as opposed to a one-point-two million dollar deficit? So we're saving a hundred thousand dollars by doing a guardian program versus a sheriff's program?
We're bringing in, well, we're bringing in more individuals as well as restructuring the organization's support system that we'll need in it as well.
But we're still talking about a hundred thousand dollar difference, and with the-
That was just at the county level, not-
I just wanna make sure the accounting or the financial comparisons accurate, because the county sheriff was gonna have, you know, the supervisors-
Not the other municipalities. Dr. Green, I think, wanted to address this.
Uh, Dr. Green.
The one-point-three was also without, if you remember the county commission meeting, they wanted to add back in the equipment. So that would've taken us to two million dollars, the additional seven-hundred thousand that they wanted to add back.
For the capital equipment, for cars and stuff like that?
For the capital improvement.
This is just personnel expenses.
But if we did not have the capital equipment with the county, if we didn't have the new sheriff's cars and all that stuff?
At that time, it was one-point-four, that presentation was before we decided to go to the seventy-thirty, so that I believe that cost would've increased.
It was fifty-fifty.
That was still a fifty-fifty at one-point-three.
If we could take enough, just, I think you understand what I want to see comparison-wise, so if we could just verify those numbers?
And we could give you the oranges to oranges.
Because maybe if we're only talking about a hundred thousand or two-hundred thousand dollar difference, we may wanna rethink it.
No, we're not.
No, no.
We're talking, and I think-
A million?
No, I think when Heather did it for me, 'cause I asked, it was like five-point-five million dollar total cost, and this is three-point-four, and if you have it, Heather, I don't, I don't know, I'll let you speak.
I do, with the seventy-thirty split, the one-point-
Well, they didn't agree to that, so we don't even need to go there.
The one-point-three million is what we were short from our budgeted amount in our, with the seventy-thirty. As we were talking, it was two-point-seven million, and our initial fifty-fifty-
Fifty-fifty with a cap of only their fifty percent towards the existing officers?
Yes, that was one million, three-thirty-five, oh-eighty-eight, so that was prior to, as Dr. Green stated, any additions of anything, that's just on our rates of last year, with our current number of officers.
So, so adding the additional sheriff's deputies less the cars, it would've been closer to two million, or?
Yes, sir. Two, two-point-two, almost. We have the whole comparison of, of the several different plans that we went over that we can give you, if you want to see them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did the cities of Homestead Beach, Palmetto, and Bradenton suggest they might, you know, go fifty-fifty like we had, you know, last year, prior to the year?
It's more beneficial for them to go seventy-thirty, and that's what they're considering.
Well, of course it is. But, you know, I, I think that it's only fair that it would be fifty-fifty, they're just resistant to that, that's how we originally have had it for many years.
That's correct, but they're looking at seventy-thirty now, and we're trying to sell that.
And the reasons they say is that, well, the county would only go seventy-thirty, or what, what are their reasons for going cheap on us?
I can't speak on behalf of our city councils.
Well, didn't they, did they express anything?
Homestead Beach is on board with seventy-thirty, the city council for Palmetto was very positive, and hopefully Bradenton will be the same, but they didn't go into the fifty-fifty.
Well, I, I'm coming from the, you know, the position that law enforcement in the city is a, you know, city council, police department responsibility, you know, same thing, that, our position that, you know, you know, outside the cities, it's a county commission through their sheriff responsibility, and we like to work with them, and in the past, we've gone fifty-fifty, and I, I think it's always been fair in the past, and why isn't it fair now? You know, to what extent that, are they telling their citizens that as far as they're concerned, you know, their, their children and the people, other people in their schools are only worth thirty cents on the dollar?
No, they, they didn't say that, Mr. Minor.
Yeah, I don't think so, I think the-
Let Dr. Green speak, and then I'll follow up.
And I just wanna note that the city of Bradenton, the city of Palmetto are having to increase the number of officers that they provide.
Palmetto will be saying the same, but Bradenton will increase their-
Well, I thought Palmetto needed to increase one at Palmetto High School.
Yes, but we're taking that away from the middle school that went charter. So it's still three and three.
Okay. All right, so Bradenton is adding officers?
They're increasing, yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Green?
Mr. Minor, when you look at the number of days that we are in school, a hundred-and-eighty days, and you look at a year contract, we have them about sixty-nine point some percent, and so that's why most of them are looking at seventy-thirty, 'cause that, you're having, you're utilizing their times about seventy percent of their contract.
Mr. Kennedy?
Well, Mr. Minor, I'm gonna stay on this point. I, I wanted to address that too, and this came up the last meeting, and I didn't say anything about it in the moment, but I, but I, I think the seventy-thirty split is actually more equitable. I mean, I thank all of our local jurisdictions for splitting it fifty-fifty with us in the past, but when you do look at the hours worked, it really a more true split should be seventy-thirty, and I'm glad that the city of Palmetto looks like they're going to, I'm confident the city of Bradenton will do the same. I understand that the, the county commission is, you know, operating with the assumption they're gonna have a big hole punched in their budget in 2020, but kind of our, the narrative that we were on last week, and I think we're getting back to now, is not a fair one to them, because to me, if I'm doing my math right, and maybe I'm not thinking of it right, and you can straighten me out, is that seventy-thirty is the equitable share, and that's where we should be, so.
So I, I just wanna go on record with Mr. Minor, that I still believe that it's the municipalities and the counties' responsibility to provide safety and security for the citizens. I, I agree with, you know, where we are today and, and looking at, you know, paying our share, but, but I'm still hopeful that the legislature will take this up next year and determine which of us is responsible for law enforcement and security in this, regardless of where these children are at any given moment, but-
And I, you took the words right out of my mouth, I was gonna say the same thing. I, I do believe that public safety is their job and education's our job, but the legislature has boxed, boxed us into this corner, and here we are, and hopefully they will fix the mistake they made in the last session.
And I just, I wanna continue that theme, because as, as I mentioned to the county commissioners, the school district of Manatee County is in the education business. According to Manatee County government's budget, they're in the law enforcement and safety, security business, so, Mr. Minor, did you wanna follow up?
Well, I, I agree with, with the chair, and I, I just don't buy it that it's equitable. It's not equitable, it's their responsibility for safety, whether the people are in high school, middle school, elementary school, walking the street, it's their responsibility, and they're not standing up to their responsibility, whether they're in the city or the unincorporated county, and that, that's how I view it. I don't think they're being responsible for the safety, and they say, well, it's in a school. Of course, there are people in the school, there are people in the streets, and we have a lot of people in the schools, you know, two-thirds of the year, but they're in this, there's still your responsibility a hundred percent of the year. That's, that's where I come from.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Minor, I could not agree with you more. Unfortunately, the legislature gave them the legal justification to shirk that responsibility. That's my only point, I completely agree with you.
Yeah, and, and in fairness to our police chiefs and our sheriff, they are in agreement that they are the best ones to provide this, but I wanna reassure the public that the guardian program is under the training of the Manatee County Sheriff's Department.
Yes, we're not here to argue with the school board, we're here to, we're on, we're on the same page. My job right now is to make sure I have thirty guardians in our schools when school starts in August, and I'm behind an A-ball right now, and I have to start posting these positions as soon as possible and start getting the training done, or we're not gonna have the thirty officers. So what I'm looking at is this is a baseline year for us. I have a law to follow, I'm gonna follow that law to the best I can, and we're gonna put these people in well-trained guardians for the safety and security of our students and staff. Next year, I am hopeful that the state legislature will look at this again regarding the funding, and hopefully we'll get back on track with that. But with that said, it, it costs some money also to, to staff these people, and I want Pat to go over some of the things that we also have to purchase as a district. Obviously, the safety guardians are gonna be uniformed, they're gonna be openly carrying, they're gonna have firearms, they're gonna have ammunitions, they're gonna have handcuffs, they're gonna have radios, and that's just some things. We're not purchasing cars for all the safety guardians, we're looking at a donation from the sheriff's office of two vehicles.
Bicycles.
So if they can-
They're gonna need that to get around in ninety-eight.
The canvas, no, I'm serious about bicycles, if you look at, you know.
So that's, that's the bare minimum right now to, to get them outfitted right now. Oh, and the ballistic vest, they have to have the ballistic vest, that goes without saying.
And you've built in recurrent training cost into this?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Minor?
Okay, this based on the program up in Polk County? Is that the prototype, or?
Similar, yes, very similar.
Pretty, pretty much followed with Judge's outfit, okay.
We went over, we've talked this over with Sheriff Wells as far as how they're gonna be outfitted, but they're gonna, the identification, they will have a certain collar polo shirt, we haven't identified that, there'll be base khakis, there'll be a web belt, I mean, they're all gonna be secured exactly the same, and so we will share in that with the different chiefs as well as Sheriff Wells, once they're all outfitted. Do you wanna go over the hiring and posting?
Before you finish-
Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, since you mentioned equipment, I would like to request that all their holsters have snaps.
They're gonna be, they'll be a threat level-
Because they're gonna be around school, children in close proximity, they can't, I don't want them to have holsters like regular law enforcement that are unsnapped.
That's, that goes without saying, it'd be a threat level three retention system.
Mr. Cologne would like to have a demo unit.
I think we should put him through the simulator.
I'm willing, and I'll put my pistol proficiency up against any of them. I practice.
Moving right along.
As we've been speaking, we've been talking about partly this whole project is to get people recruited and into the positions, so over the next couple of weeks, we will have intensified, assuming pending board approval for those job descriptions, we'll get them up and posted so that we can start that process. Our expectation would be that by the second, couple of weeks of June, by the second week of June, we'd be able to start hiring, and these folks would then be placed, we'll be working with the sheriff's department on that training, Pat will be working with them as we kinda get everyone together, as we get that hiring, like cadres, if you will, that would be going through the training process, to be scheduled to be completed before we start the school year. So that's kinda what the outline is there for you, is that that would be our hope. We'll be doing some advertising that will be both, both social media as well as some billboards, as well as some, you know, whatever it takes for us to do it. Again, one of the other things is we'll be tapping into the retirees through the FRS, and there's some other avenues we'll be looking into, to see about capturing some of those retired law enforcement officers that would be willing to wanna come in and do this kind of work as well. I know Sheriff Wells had spoken at one of our meetings that they already had a list of some folks that may have an interest, so we will be gathering all of that, and again, that information, Mr. Bartholomew will be working closely with, with Sheriff Wells, and, and so that we can bring this all together as we do the recruitment and get people on board with us, keeping in mind that we will lose some, as we mentioned earlier, so we will have that, and that rotational, keeping this open.
So, Mr. Serrana, our, our needs call for twenty-eight, and we're gonna have thirty, so we're going to have backup?
We need some, we, we will have backup, we'll have some rotation. We know that individuals do get sick, we know individuals may have to go out for medical leave or something of that nature, this is not a position that we can just call up a substitute with, and so we will have a, a backfill of individuals like that, yes.
Okay, and then, do we have a, a, or maybe we should consider a continuing agreement with the sheriff's department, the Bradenton Police Department, that should we have a need for like off-duty officers to fill in?
We do, we do have that, yes. They just couldn't sustain that-
Right, right.
At the pace we're going with right now. You also have attached to the information, I think, the job descriptions, so we do have three new job descriptions here. One will be the, the director, as I spoke about earlier, to do the supervision. This individual will also be carrying, this individual will also go through all the training necessary, 'cause he or she will be leading by example, and so that's, that's imperative. The other one then is the school safety guardian position, and then the other one is the school guardian lead position, so all three of those positions will be need to be approved to, to move forward on this. As Sarah said, we do post positions sometimes prior to board approval, saying that it's pending board approval, that is just to get everything moving, so people start applying. We are competing with Sarasota, we're competing with Pinellas, we're competing with Hillsborough and Polk for the same pool of candidates, and so these job descriptions will be going up, but I wanna assure you, we won't be doing any hiring or anything of that nature until it's, it's approved at the June board meeting. Okay? Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
The, obviously, the sheriff's office is responsible for the training through the guardian program, and the funds run through the sheriff and then come to us, is that-
Well, Heather's looking into that and trying to get some exact information on how that's gonna transpire, but we are, we are looking into that.
But actually, the question I, I wanted to, or the idea that your problem child wants to bring up is, you know, we have a, we have a really great law enforcement academy out in Liquid Ranch at MTC East, and is there, I was just curious if there's some way we can kinda roll together and assist the sheriff's office in training with the facilities that we have out there, if it's-
Well, in fact, MTC does provide the school resource officer certification training. That's a, that's a good question, because we could probably get some of our more, more, we could probably get some of our money back by inflating the rates with which we charge the sheriff for, in order to ensure that we recover, recover a hundred percent of our cost of providing those services, the firing range, et cetera.
Intuition just went up in MTC.
It's, no, that's, that's governed by statute to have the training through the sheriff's office, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on item number three, superintendent's annual evaluation. And, and, Mr. Serrana, for the, the board members, as, as they, as the board thinks through this, are you the contact person to filter questions for the guardian program? Okay, and so, so over the course of the next week or two, as we get public inquiries, the board member should contact you? Okay. All right, so, Mr. Kennedy, since you're the last one that went through this review process.
Well, I, I didn't include any comments online. I had a...
I got halfway through the comments, but I didn't submit them. We've had a busy, a busy week.
When I submitted mine as an individual, I took a slightly different tact with the tack, tack, with my responses, which, so, but all that's left here is my numbers. So I will, I'll have a copy of my individual, my individual evaluation for you all to take a look at, because it, it's, it's part of the evaluation. Not just the numbers here. I think the, I think you'll enjoy the format with which I completed my evaluation. That said, I mean, there's really, this is the same evaluation instrument we've been using. I think this is the third time we've used this one now. So I would imagine, I'm looking for the final, if we have a final rating on the back, we do not...
Yeah, I think, I think we're missing the student achievement numbers. That's what I'm going to say.
Yeah, okay.
I know that I'm speaking about my own evaluation, but it never, at this point, you're only doing your portion. The student, the VAM scores do not come until September, October, so it's always behind.
So should we plug in last year's numbers? Should we plug in last year's numbers?
No, but this is exactly what the teachers go through. The teachers get this part, and then they have to sit around and wait.
This is exactly how our teachers get it. They get this part, and then in October, they get the remaining part of their evaluation. So I, I'm on similar schedule as they are.
So we really won't have, assuming we go through the transition, we won't have the academic achievement numbers?
That is correct.
Until you're...
Till I'm in another, yes.
All right, so we should, we should probably give some thought to how we want to incorporate that, or what was your, what would be your recommendation, superintendent?
My recommendation is continue to do this the same way. The board gave me their, their final evaluation. The, the student performance part just always came later. And one, it helps teachers know that I'm going through the same process that they're going through. When they get their evaluation towards the end of the school year, it is, it is, it is incomplete, because the student achievement part is not available.
I gave you highly effective for those numbers.
Well, thank you.
I gave a zero. As a point of information, I'd like everyone to know, I filled out no evaluation for Dr. Green, since she's not going to be here. An evaluation is to let them know what they did right, what they did wrong, going forward for the next year. Since she will not be here next year, I didn't think it was incumbent on me to fill out an evaluation about something that will be meaningless to her, as far as I'm concerned, for our district.
I think she would respect your opinion. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, no, and that, that, we turned these in before the news had come down from Duval. Of course, I was assuming the inevitable, and for that reason, it was kind of why I took a tongue-in-cheek approach to the superintendent's evaluation this year, which that will be when, when we have some copies for you, that will make more sense.
So this should be a roast?
Uh, no, quite the opposite. It was not, it was not a roast at all. But, but Michelle did translate, or did, you know, copy over my evaluation numbers here. And by the way, and we, we kind of ran into this last year too. If you look at the last page under item number 16, which is overall, on the second to last page, you'll see there it says four, nine, three, and 10.
Right.
But...
And vice chair messenger, I followed that.
Yeah, that's not, if, and...
What you're saying is you and I read?
Well, no, but we had this problem last year, because on one part of the, there's a four through one scale. But then you have to convert that into the 10, 9, 8, 7, or below scale, you know.
I actually averaged all of mine and calculated what I would have come up with, and then was very mathematical about it.
That, that is the test question on the test, and you fell for it. No, I'm kidding.
Like I said, I took a different approach.
I know. You and Mr. Minor wanted to wait.
Yes.
Vice chair messengers in my response, so that regardless of what we put, she would have gotten highly effective.
Oh, I see where you're going.
You see the difference?
It's just two different interpretations of the same document, once again.
Mr. Minor?
Well, it appears that she got mostly passing scores here, so I, I'll repeat what I said in my summary, that I think all of us, the community, and our school district, and our school board are most fortunate to have Dr. Diana Green as our superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Vice chair messenger?
And nothing other than I admire her. I told her that the other night, and I mean that. And kids have a way of knowing whether you're a good person or not, and Olivia loves her. Olivia loves her to the point that one, the night that you were chosen, and I told her, she was, "Why?" And then I think she wants to move now, so, but that, that's, that's a big thing, when kids, kids know. Kids know who's a good person. Kids know those things. So, you know, you, I might be a tough grader. That's the teacher at heart. But I think a lot of you, and so you will very much be missed, and I appreciate the work that you do.
And what I would encourage each of us to do is, regardless of whether or not you filled out the evaluation form, is, is to meet with Dr. Green and share with her your, you know, your experiences with her, and, and use it as an opportunity to, you know, provide her with feedback as she moves into, as Mr. Cologne and I know will be a more politically challenging environment. And we, we do appreciate, and we're going to get into that as we discuss the transition and timeline. Mr. Cologne?
I will just say this, in not filling out an evaluation, I guess I just had more confidence in Dr. Green than the rest of you, because I knew she would get the position, because they'd be foolish not to take her.
Everybody's mic's on. All right, with that, are we ready to move in to number four? Discussion of the superintendent's transition and timeline. I'll go ahead and, and start off. Dr. Green and I met this morning to, to kind of go over, you know, her thoughts and what she felt the timing would be. So the, the first note would be that Dr. Green expects to have a, an executed employment agreement with the Duval County School Board on June 1st. At that time, she expects to provide her 30-day notice and letter of resignation that would be effective June 30 of 2018. During the interim, she expects to continue as superintendent through that point with, you know, time as needed for, you know, any type of, you know, transition, relocation meetings and things like that. At such time, she would, as she has continued to do in the past, appoint an acting superintendent to, to, to maintain that, that continuity. With that being said, there are a few of you that have been through this process at least once, if not multiple times. So, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to kind of lead off with your, your thoughts around and timing, an interim superintendent, the, the transition that will be beginning actually today?
I'll be quick, because actually, Mr. Minor's been through this twice, and I've been through it once. And when we, when we did this three years ago, to me, it was a totally different scenario, because Dr. Green was already here, and she was kind of the common sense, the most natural candidate. This situation is much different, obviously, just because of, you know, the circumstances of, you know, where everybody is and has come from and is going and so forth. The one, just one piece of housekeeping, if June 30th is going to be Dr. Green's last day, and by law, we must have a superintendent, that would mean we would have to have a Sunday morning special board meeting, because July 1st is a Sunday. So we might want to take care of that the day before.
Yeah, I think...
That Friday before, or whatever.
Right, I think around that, we, we have some options, and I, my, I guess my hope is that through our discussion over the course of the next hour, is to get a sense, we obviously have some decisions. One is, we, we, we look within the organization for a viable interim superintendent, which means that once Dr. Green has provided her letter of resignation to be effective June 30, or at the end of June 30, if our discussion leads us in one particular direction, we could be prepared for either our June 12th board meeting or our June 26th board meeting to name an interim superintendent that would be effective July 1st, which would be contingent upon Dr. Green leaving for Duval County on the 30th.
Make it effective for July 2nd. Yeah, so that said, I, I mean, I, I agree, and once the news broke on Friday afternoon, I am like the four of you. Also, I'm sure you have had lots of people reach out with suggestions. You know, Cindy's name has come up, Doug Wagner's name has come up. Willie Clark's name has been brought up to me by a handful of people. I mean, there, I have heard at least 10 or 12 different names of people inside the district and outside the district. I, I think we can hold off on this to kind of take more input, to think about it, and I know there's a lot of interest in this right now. And I've been pretty clear that I, I think, just speaking for myself, obviously, but whomever steps into the role, whomever provides us with, with stability and continuity, that's kind of my catchphrase, the past three days, is whoever, whoever can best provide us a smooth transition through budgeting, preparations for next school year, professional development, and so forth. So I, I have been through this before, but I have not been through this before, because the situation is different. Now, Mr. Minor, I think, has been through this before, because he was, he was here for a national search and, and the process and the aftermath, so I kind of defer to him.
Right, to your point, I think what's important is that we, we basically have before us a need for like a 30, 35-day plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's different from, you know, what, what may follow, and that's why I think we need to really spend the time thinking through, because, you know, we can certainly have, you know, we can call emergency meetings or whatever, but, but I, I think we need to kind of, for a number of reasons, think through this, because first and foremost, we're at a critical time, because we have teachers that are leaving on summer vacation. We're in the middle of recruitment. So Dr. Green and we have all laid a foundation for this to be our best recruiting year ever, because of the passage of the referendum. And so I believe we need, if possible, to create a timeline and some short-term and long-term milestones so that we can maintain that, that continuity and, and create a, a level of, more than comfort, create a level of, of sort of security for the district, because we can expect to have to transition to an interim superintendent July 1st.
Yeah, can I make, can I make one more thing?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To that point, to let teachers know before, not before they go on break, but early on in the summer, and this is not our role as board members, this is the superintendent's role to do, but I, but I, I think any changes that we are going to make, personnel-wise, or moving people, and I haven't talked to the superintendent about this all yet, but part of that stability and continuity is, let's, you know, not that, again, this is not our role, this is the superintendent's, but, you know, kind of look for somebody, I'm not sure the best way to say this, but, but if we don't do, if we don't, as a district, move a lot of people around, so, because that creates upheaval.
Right.
So, you know, there's, the stability factor, there's a lot of pieces to creating stability, putting people's minds at rest. I'm not really sure how or what I'm trying to say, but I, I think that factors into that. And again, it's not our role to, to make those decisions, or even make a decision, are we going to move people or not? But, you know, I think if, if there's a sense among the board, we should keep the waters calm as far as personnel and focus on, you know, our recruitment efforts, and hey, we know, before the superintendent leaves, we know where everybody is going to be next school year, when August 13th, when school begins. That might, you know, let her make those decisions on, you know, as her kind of final mark on the district. But I'm just thinking out loud. That's, that's my final thought.
Vice chair messenger?
It sounds like what you're hoping for is to make some sort of timeline, a short-term timeline right now, and focus on the long-term later on down the road. It sounds like you're talking about national search. I don't know how everyone else feels later on down the line, but I'm on board with that. For a short-term timeline, I know, I'm the one that threw out Doug Wagner's name when Ryan McKinnon called me yesterday, and he's like, can I, can I write that? I'm like, yeah, you can write that. And then I like literally jumped on my email, I was like, Doug, I put your name out there. I'm sorry, but, you know. So I, I, I'm just going to say why I put his name out there. He made our career technical education program one of the number one in the state, so he understands the educational parts. Before he came here 18 years ago, he worked for the state, but because of the background that he had at MTC, he also, I think, understands some of the business aspects, and so that's why I put his name out there, for stability. Because I agree with you, with this interim piece, there should be some stability there. So that is why I put his name out there. I know that we also have Bill, I think it's Bill Vogler?
Bill.
Vogel?
Bill Vogel.
Vogel. And he, I know, serves as interim superintendent for FSBA, I believe. He has been here before, not as an interim, I don't think, but as our negotiator, so he knows the team. So if we decided to do something outside for interim, I had that thought. So that's really my thought process. I'm comfortable if we, you know, feel like we need to name somebody on June 12th or June 26th, if we come to a conclusion that we find the right person in that timeframe, and we want to name somebody, I'm comfortable with that. And then tackling the other things later on, you know, we need to create, create a consensus of what we want in our next superintendent, how we're going to reach the next level, and I think you have the same vision. So, you know, I think that takes time, and I want to take the time to do those things. I'm not looking to rush this, you know. Not only that, the, there is a majority of the board that is up for election, and I'm hoping all my friends, you know, are still sitting up here with me. If you're not sitting up up here with me, you know, then, you know, that wouldn't be fair to the other candidates, you know. So I think we have to, you know, think about that as well. Not that I don't enjoy all of you. So I would like to postpone that part, but that would take a long time, I think, anyways. So those are just my thoughts. I'm putting them out there.
That's what this is for.
If you don't like it, you can just throw them right back.
No, that's, that's what this conversation is for, for us to, you know, think out loud, because this is the only forum we can have this discussion.
Although I would prefer if Dr. Green would stay. But I will say, not to get too preachy, I'm a big believer that God puts you where you're supposed to be and opens the doors that are supposed to be opened to you.
Okay. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mrs. Messenger?
And Mrs. Messenger, I think that you're going to have, be stuck with me up here for a little bit, no matter what happens in the election.
You two are a sure thing.
Yeah, and.
Well, for two years.
Yeah, we're, we're the only two sure things that are going to be around here. And I thank the Chair for having this session to kind of talk about things. And I think in, you know, two weeks, we're going to start having to make, you know, some decisions about short-term and, and long-term. And there are mentions of interim, I think some good people have been mentioned. And I, we, we have a lot of retired talent here in Manatee County and in the area. I'm, I'm thinking of Lori White, Wilma Hamilton, who I spoke with at the F, H, or FFA banquet over in Palmetto. I guess it was a week ago, you know, Friday, and a lovely lady, Lori's wonderful. These are former superintendents in Sarasota. And Gina mentioned Bill Vogel, you know, who's sort of, you know, a terrific guy. Superintendent of the Year in St. Lucy and then Superintendent in Seminole. And has a great acquaintance, you know, with, with Manatee, he owns property. He lives most of the time here in Manatee County and Upper. And I, I think that there are also, you know, many I know who are interested in being, you know, superintendent. I've been contacted and I know, I won't go into all the names, but there are a lot of people in there who would cherish the idea of being here. What, an issue also that we, I, I think it's not something today or tomorrow, you know, to be addressed, but I think that we have to, as, as board members that we look out for the district, have to address a situation where we have a contract right now with Dr. Green. A June 1, 2016 contract for four years. It's going on now, we're approaching the halfway mark. And the issue that we have to, you know, deal with is that contract for four years, you know, it says that it's for four years. And that during this four years, in, in paragraph two, it says, "It's the intent of the parties and the condition of the agreement that the superintendent's employment by the board shall be exclusive and that the superintendent shall accept no other employment during the term of this agreement except as herein otherwise permitted in advance by the board." Well, we're talking about, and I think that we all agree that Duval would be a great place for. We also agree that, you know, this is a great place for her. And the, it, it's not, and this, this agreement was not lightly taken. It was signed by our superintendent, by our Chair at the time on May 30th, or 31st to 16th. And by Mr. Dye, the attorney. It wasn't done lightly, it wasn't rushed. I, I've sent the board members and, and if any media here wants to, you know, have copies, they can call my office. It's, it's all public records and I have copies too. But in the agenda package for May 24th, they had this, you know, contract, proposed contract. In the May 24th, 2016 board meeting, this contract was approved. And, and all, all contained in it, the provision that Dr. Green's about exclusivity of employment with the district during the four years beginning on June 1, 2016. That would run until June 1, 2020, two years from now. And none of these contracts that were proposed or put into, approved by the minutes, sent out to the community, that it was going to be considered at any opt-out clause. That is, that the superintendent could leave when she felt it was, you know, best, for whatever reason. So as board members, we wish her well. We, we think she'd do a great job up there. At the same time, we have a duty to our community, you know, to this district. There's one, why do you have a four-year contract? Well, now, to avoid the expense of going through recruiting, maybe in two years like now, that it, there is expense that go to retain the expertise of a very expert and qualified, you know, person, you know, serving our community. And her going to Duval, you know, deprives our community of that. And is there, you know, any kind of, you know, way to kind of resolve this many ways? But it is a loss to our community just to allow that. And as a board member who serves this district, I think that, you know, that loss, you know, should be acknowledged and in some way, you know, addressed as we move forward and before she goes up and, up to Duval. And so, yeah, these are all public records that I refer to, that anybody can have. Just to, you know, let it go at that, I don't think is consistent with how I see my duty, you know, as a board member. So I hope in, in two weeks, this is something that we will all address in a way that is positive to everybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. Mr. Minor, I just wanted to address your concern with the possibility if we were to make a motion tonight at the board meeting to direct this, to direct the board attorney to draw up an amended contract which included an opt-out clause, would that satisfy your legal concern?
No, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think that what, what we have here is a four-year contract that I, I think we ought to explore all, you know, opportunities. But I think that we, you know, this district, who we all work for, who we all represent, you know, has a contract with Dr. Green that, you know, should be, oh, if not, you know, fully honored. It should be after the, this community has a chance to, you know, comment on what's the best way to handle it. And we, we address this in two weeks and, you know, go from there.
So, so, and, and I too read your, 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 your emails and your interpretation of the agreement. There, there is a provision that somehow was in a number of drafts but didn't make it into the final. That being said, for the purposes of this discussion, I believe we should assume that Dr. Green on July 1st will be the superintendent of Duval County and not Manatee County. So I would, I would like to know each member's thoughts around the next 35 days, 36 days, getting us to complying with state law and having an interim superintendent. So I've heard that we have at least one person or two people that are in leadership positions in the district that have been mentioned. I've heard we have a number of, of former superintendents, former interim superintendents. Dr. Russo, who is the Chair of the Audit Committee, who, who is intimately knowledgeable, is also a former superintendent that lives in the community. So we, we, we have a number of options. So getting, getting to either the 12th or the 26th, because we do have to have a superintendent July 1st if Dr. Green is not going to be our superintendent on July 1st. So would, would the board be interested in, in putting out, as brief as it may be, a solicitation for an interim superintendent to find out who of these people in the area would be interested? I know many people are having one-on-one conversations. Does that make sense, Mr. Kennedy?
Well, I think Mr. Clone would.
Mr. Clone?
I, since the conversation has gone this way with Mr. Minor, and I don't disagree with him, by the way, I have read it. I would like to make a suggestion that as a form of compensation to our district for Dr. Green leaving, that we utilize a consulting contract where she, the interim superintendent would have access to Dr. Green on an ongoing basis for consultation so that we keep the district on track moving forward with the same plan that she has already implemented here. I think that district continuity is critical at this juncture. I think that staff, principals, and even children are comfortable with Dr. Green and the image and the persona she has presented to our district. And I feel staff morale is critical. And I, I see where, you know, I believe, I could be wrong, but I see where Mr. Minor is going. And I think that that would be an acceptable form of compensation to me if she were to provide knowledge and ongoing advice for a period of time. Because I don't feel it's necessary for us to hold someone back or hold them hostage to a job.
So, so with that, because it's probably a good time, I, because I, I recognized a few weeks ago the, the probable issue with the contract that was executed. So I, I've, I spoke with Mr. Dye about it and he's done a considerable amount of research. So perhaps, since Mr. Minor brought the issue up, which I think is appropriate, Mr. Dye, do you, have you prepared an opinion with regards to where we are in this sort of quandary?
Yes, and, and there's, there's two parts to any kind of a legal problem. One is the factual background, what happened, who's involved, what, what were the intents of the parties? And once you determine that, then you can bring whatever laws or cases to bear on the factual situation. Factually, the, the original contract with Dr. Green, her initial one, had a clause in it that required her to give a 30-day notice if she was going to terminate the contract, basically a 30-day resignation letter. Going back through some of the earlier contracts, this pretty, pretty, pretty common practice.
Consistent.
Not only with Dr. Green, but also previous superintendents, including Dr. Vogel's interim contract when, when he was pinch hitting. What happened when, when the, her initial one-year contract was extended into a four-year contract is the form contract that everybody was working off of had that 30-day clause in it, that 30-day notice of termination. During the back and forth, when the contract was being negotiated, it fell out. And in my view, looking through it and everything, I think it's a simple Scrivener's error. Talking to Mrs. Carpenter, who represented the board in the negotiation, she has no recollection of that ever being an issue during the negotiation. There was no discussion that the 30-day notice requirement go away, that it was intended to be, that Dr. Green had no opportunity to resign if she wanted to. That was just not part of the discussion anywhere along the way. The other parts of the contract that were being negotiated had to do with termination for cause, her, her evaluation instrument and some of the other, I think fairly mechanical uncontroversial issues that came up. And those, those were always done in, in a track changes format. You know, where the, the, the language that was being removed was struck through, the language being added was underlined. So because this 30-day clause disappeared without that format being applied to it, my conclusion is that it was not intended to, to come out. It was just, like I say, a Scrivener's error.
So, so at no time in the emails going back and forth and the documents going back and forth, did anyone raise an issue with that paragraph?
Nobody, nobody, neither on Dr. Green's negotiating team or on the school board's negotiating team.
And, and, and neither was there a, a section in the final agreement which created any kind of penalty should Dr. Green resign?
Correct, there, there's nothing, it, it.
It's like.
The only way it can be explained is that it was, it dropped out through a Scrivener's error. So, so in my view, if, if the school board wants to take this up, I'm going to say, there are cases out there that say, if a clause drops out of a contract and it goes to litigation, the courts are allowed to say, what was the intent of the parties? Did they intend for this clause to be there or not be there? And, and the, the evidence that I've seen, the historical evidence, is that there was no intent for this to be removed. So in my view, if a court had to get involved in this, they would say, this was a mistake. It was not intended to remove that 30-day notice requirement to prevent Dr. Green from resigning if she wants to.
Is, is, is there, to your knowledge, is there a provision in Florida law that provides for a public entity to make somebody do a job that they don't want to do?
No, you can't do that, no. You can't, you can't force somebody to work for you.
Okay.
In a, in a personal services contract, which really what this is, you can, if, if a person wants to leave, they, they can leave.
That, that would be my understanding also. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I, I, this, we got this email. I had no idea this was even going on until an hour and a half before this meeting started, so I'm trying to catch up via emails we're talking. And I'm trying to figure out what is the, that's why I'm asking Mr. Minor, if this is a, if this is a legal question? Or like what, what's the end result, Mr. Minor, that you would like to happen here? Like what's the motivation?
Well, I, I think that.
Mr. Minor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think this is something, you know, two weeks from now, we, we can get all, you know, settled up. I, I don't agree with, you know, statements that I just heard from, you know, Mr. Dye. That sort of is an inadvertent oversight, that it was, an opt-out provision was not included. This is a new contract, this wasn't just a replication of the 2005 contract. Several different positions. The most notable, you know, change, if you say, you know, not including a opt-out provision, was making it four years. This is, wasn't just for one year or two years and we're just coming up on the two-year anniversary, but it was for four years. And why do you do it for four years? Well, you do it, you know, for kind of security on both sides. And that makes sense why you not, you know, have an opt-out provision. We have, the employee can expect employment for four years. You know, the district can expect for four years, the person to be there. I think it makes a lot of sense. What we have here is a, a contract that was represented to our community, as we have right now. This contract was sent out in the, the agenda, you know, for people to say, gee, I don't like it, or yeah, this is fair, this is good. And then there was a meeting, you know, for the community, you know, to say, yes, good. Or, you know, somebody on the board say, I, I don't like this. Or Mrs. Dr. Green saying, well, I don't like it, or it should have an opt-out provision or anything like that. None of that occurred. And then we have, you know, signing this contract. You know, we have Mr. Dye himself. We have Mrs. Carpenter signing this contract. And all, and these are, you know, very literate, educated, concerned people. And we have Dr. Green, who's, you know, extremely literate, believes in reading, and signed the contract on May 31. And now we're having discussion, is this a valid contract? Well, was it done in a rush? No, it wasn't right after the May 24th meeting, it was May 31st, you know, to be effective on June 1. And I, I think that it, it's hard to repudiate the, a contract like that. Now, Mr. Dye said, well, you know, there's situations where maybe something was left out or something like that, but I don't, what, you know, I asked him to send authority, which I don't think is on point at all.
Mr. Minor, if, if I can help, just sort of move along. Mr. Kennedy had asked, you know, you brought up a relevant point. What, what, what are you, what are you looking for? What do you want?
I'm looking for how the community feels about this. And I, and that's why I say, two weeks, see how they feel, maybe, what the heck? Maybe, what the heck, you know, Dr. Green's a trippy person. Let's just let her go. Or, I, but I think as a board member, it's important to bring this up. Is there some, you know, Mr. Cologne was talking about some form of compensation for this, you know, just walking away from this contract? And there might be some other ideas. And, and I, and I think we ought to, the, give the community an opportunity to voice, this, this is an asset. This contract is an asset that belongs to the community. And I think we ought to listen to the community. What they think before we go forward with this. But I, I have, you know, every expectation and hope that two weeks from now, we'll have this all taken care of.
Okay, so, so for the purposes of this discussion, I think that, that's a separate issue because I, I do believe we still need to be planning.
Sure.
For a superintendent on July 1st.
I, 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 I agree.
Regardless.
And, and an interim. And I, I, I think the, the chair said it very well. Okay, yeah, we, this issue's on the table. We don't have to go further with it right now. But we need to be thinking in terms of interim and, you know, plans for how we go about selecting a, a full-time, you know, permanent for some period.
Right.
You know, superintendent. I agree with the chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Kennedy?
I do, again, I just, I don't have any other opportunity to ask this question of you, Mr. Minor, outside of a public meeting. But you made the comment that this contract is an asset?
Yes.
So for the, over the next two weeks, the community can have a conversation over we, how we use that asset to extract something from Dr. Green?
Not necessarily. It, it, uh, it, it belongs to the community. We, on June, or excuse me, on May 24, 2016, we held a meeting. And the public had a notice of, we were going to consider this contract. And this, this board, board, the, the board at the time approved this contract. You know, and it had contractual rights. Now contractual rights, you know, belong to this entity called this, the School District of Manatee County.
I get, I understand all that.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
And that, that's why I say it's an.
Could, because I really do not want to spend the next 30 minutes.
Okay, well, okay, Mr. Chair, I, I apologize. I was trying to respond to Mr. Kennedy, but I was out of.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I needed me to interfere. Dr. Green would like to make a comment, but. Okay, Dr. Dr. Green? And I'll come back to you, Mr. Kennedy.
Sure. And I don't know whether this original contract specifically had the clause in it that either party, as long as they gave 30 days' notice, could whether resign or end the contract. That clause was in it the last time I read it, before it came to the board. And so I have no idea how it fell out or why it didn't convert over to the, to the final contract. But my concern is, first of all, it is being stated as, as if I have been bought and I am, I'm owned by someone, which is, is a little disconcerting. I have served this district with honor and, and humbleness, and I have put my heart and soul for this school district and this community. The, the clause that Mr. Minor is speaking of, it is there to say that I exclusively work as the superintendent, that I could not go out and get a part-time job being a college professor. I couldn't go consult for another company. That I exclusively needed to be the superintendent of the school district. And the reason I know that is because I specifically had it investigated, what does that clause mean? Because when you just read it on the surface, it sounds like I was bought for four years and that's it. But the clause that put, that put the contract in a format that indicated, one, when we hire you as the superintendent, that's all we want you to be, is the superintendent. And two, if you choose to leave, to give the board 30 days' notice. It was in the original contract when I signed it. Again, it was there before it, it was put on the board agenda. And my concern is that it isn't, the, the contract is between myself and the school board. It is not between myself and the community. So this board needs to make a decision. Mr. Dai has already weighed in. Mr. Titlebaum, though he's not speaking, has already reviewed this. This has been reviewed by several other attorneys. And the thought of trying to make me pay or remove days that I have earned as the superintendent is just unacceptable. And so my concern, again, is this, this contract isn't with the community. This contract was with this school board. And unfortunately, an error happened. And I am requesting that this school board make a decision about this at this time because you do have some important decisions to make because you will need a new interim superintendent starting July 1.
And, and I agree, this is, this has been looked at. And I will, you know, I will, I will tell you, I have entered into employment agreements. I've, I've been the party, I've been the CEO in an employment agreement in multiple states, in multiple countries. Some countries with laws more favorable to employees than ours. Some countries with laws less favorable to employees. And I, I must tell you, I, I, I've been told by many attorneys, as an expert witness, never say never. But until this point, I had not seen an executive employment agreement that did not have the provisions for the conditions with which the executive would, you know, leave, leave the employ of, of, of the company. I, I do believe we, we need to resolve this aspect of it because I, 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 I am confident that, that it was an oversight. It was a Scrivener's error. You had multiple attorneys on the board. And I don't believe the, the, and I don't believe that Mr. Minor would, had he caught it, would have not weighed in that, hey, there's not a provision in here should the superintendent choose to leave. In this day and age, we just do not have employment agreements that don't address that aspect of it. It was, it was almost like a unilateral agreement. And I do want to note that the only attorneys involved in the agreement were our own attorneys. There was not an independent attorney because of the relationship that Dr. Green had with the district, coming off of being the interim superintendent, moving into the permanent superintendent. It was, we're all in this together. And I think it was just, perhaps it didn't have the level of scrutiny. I was not on the board, but I do know there were two attorney board members at the time that the agreement was, was proffered and executed. And, and I too am, am confident that it was, it was an oversight. It, it somehow in the communication of one version of the document to the next, it just wasn't in there. Because I believe Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Minor, had they recognized it, I don't believe they would have said, wow, this is great. There's nothing in here to protect the superintendent, she's ours for four years. I mean, that just, I just haven't seen that. So I, I, I do believe that we, we have a, we, we have a way to fix this so that we can move forward. And if I may defer before, before you, if I may defer to Mr. Dai, should we discuss it now or should we just bring it up in, because can we actually do business with regards to passing a motion in the workshop? Or do we have to take that up this evening?
It, it should be on one of your regular agendas. It should be at your regular meeting.
Okay, so then I think we should probably, I, I believe that we need, and I will, during the break, before the meeting starts, I think I will amend the agenda for this evening's bu, uh, business meeting to include this issue. Unless there is a, a, a near unanimous objection to that. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
No, I was going to say, I mean, my, again, I just heard about this three hours ago for the first time. But I think the consensus of the board is that we, we wish you well and we're sorry to lose you, but we don't want to fight over your exit. And, you know, we wish you the best and, and we want you to leave on, on, on a positive note, not, not in conflict.
We want you to at least be willing to come back and visit. In vacation and, and spend, you know, money in our restaurants on holiday.
But I, I, Mr. Chair, I want to totally shift gears back to the interim process. And I, and I just have an idea, not sure of exactly how we execute this detail-wise, but I think we should have, kind of like we name a school, not that long, but a, open a window where people can submit their name or can submit a nomination. Although maybe the nom, maybe the nomination.
We'll work on the nomenclature.
Exactly, okay. And then close that window and then open another window for the, the public to offer their feedback on the people who've put themselves forward. And we get all that done by the June 26 meeting. So that, that way at the board meeting on the 26th, we can name an interim. Just an idea, I hear some wrestling behind me. And, and so that way on the 26th, we have opened a window of opportunity. We have collected a couple of weeks' worth of, maybe three weeks' worth of public feedback. And then we can make a decision based on that process.
I would, the only note there is, given the timeline, I mean, like June 26 would be the.
That's our drop dead date.
Yeah, right, right, that, that's cutting it close, but, but.
If I, I just want to add one more thing that Gina brought up earlier. My, I am, my comments earlier, I was speaking only about the interim.
Right, right, right.
And I, I think.
And I think that's what we need to focus on.
Okay, just making sure.
You know, I, I really do. And, and, Mr. Cologne, you want to make a comment or you got your mic on?
Any comment I make at this point is useless anyway. You know, I looked at the contract, and any contract to be, you have to put in the contract a penalty. And since there is no penalty in the contract, I don't think any court would hold you to it.
All right.
If it were to be adjudicated in court, that's number one. Number two, I don't personally feel this is a community decision. I feel it's a board decision.
The board, the community put us here to make those decisions?
Community put us here, no, no argument. But they put us here to make decisions. And this is a policy decision of the board. So it's up to us to make that decision. All right? I simply made the, throughout the idea of having her talk to our interim because I know she's going to do it anyway because she's that type of person, whoever the interim is. She will, you know, give them, you know, ideas, fill them in so that they don't come in blind. But I want to impress on the rest of the board that, as you just said, Mr. Chair, the timeline is critical. And we need to have someone who can hit the ground running. Someone who is already involved in the system. Someone, not bring in someone from outside who's got to relearn or try and get familiar with what's going on already that the staff is not familiar with. I'm a big believer in the morale of the community, the children, the principals. They are all integral parts of this system and they have to be respected. And I, I think it's critical. So, you know, I for one think that, you know, I know who I think should be the interim. And I think it should be Ms. Saunders because she's in the best position to move us forward in continuity. She's just going to be an interim. If the community wants to weigh in for another superintendent, that's up to them later if we decide to go that route. But I think it's critical, we don't have, if we had three or four months and you want to start going through all of that community input and stuff, that's one thing. We don't have that time. We're recruiting new teachers now. Dr. Green and Ms. Saunders have worked together. She knows the system. She, Dr. Green will work with her, I'm sure, because they are personal friends as well as colleagues. And I think that would be in the best interest of the board and the community. And that's my opinion on it.
And, and with that, I'd like to, to sort of give my perspective. The superintendent had, and I had this discussion of, of kind of, you know, where, where I see the district and, and why I believe we need to sort of compartmentalize these decisions. You're, for all the students out there that have summer reading lists, the board is going to have a summer reading list also. And the first two publications, which I think they've probably already been ordered. One is titled On Strategy, which is a, a, a group of definitive articles from the Harvard Business Review that talks about strategy. It, it talks about what is strategy, what's not strategy. The other, which is, is The Tipping Point, which is by Mal, Malcolm Gladwell. And I don't know if any of you've written, you know, read his work. But this one, the subtitle is How Little Things Can Make A Big Difference. And, and why I think it's timely for us, first of all, I think you should, you, you sort of read the, the book club guide because he, he ties epidemiology into education and business and things like that. And I've read it a number of times, but it was kind of comical when I think back and said, oh, wait a second, that explains why I think the way I do because I am an epidemiologist. But I believe the district is, is at a tipping point. I believe that this board and the superintendent has brought us to a point where we truly are at that tipping point where we are ready to accelerate and become an A district and put us on a path to being number one, which is what we've talked about. We do have a leadership team that's in place that has been working effectively. The district's been moved from a C to a B. We've moved all F schools to a D or a C. We have secured the maximum amount of taxing authority that the legislature allows for any district. And so I believe this board is faced with a number of critical decisions. One is basically that 35-day plan. Because we, we have the, the, the momentum and the funding with which we should be able to recruit and retain the talent we need to move us forward at an accelerated rate. To do that, we must have the minimum amount of disruption to the organization in order to effectively recruit and retain the talent. That is different than the long-range plan. And, and these two books are going to help guide us. And the, the cabinet, copies have been ordered for the cabinet as well so that we're all going to be on the same page. Because when an organization reaches the point where the School District of Manatee County is today and is faced with a, a situation where the CEO of the board, the superintendent, is leaving and we're faced with needing to fill that slot, you basically have two directions you can go. One is the board decides that we don't know where we want to be in five years. We don't know how we're going to get there. And we need to hire someone to tell us what we need to know. The other is that we, we, we define where we want to be in five years and 10 years. And I think we're all in agreement, we want to be an A district for starters. And we, we, we develop a strategic plan and a financial plan and an operating plan. And then we identify what additional talent we need to get us there. My personal and professional opinion is, is we're in that second branch. And that is that I believe we are ready to define where we want to be in five years and 10 years. I believe through spending some time with, with the community, with MEA, with the leadership here, we can develop that, that, that strategic plan and that strategy. And then we can do what Duval did. Duval is an example of, they went out and they, they contracted with a firm. Duval is an example of, they went out and they, they contracted with a firm that helped them identify the, the characteristics, the experience, the style of superintendent they needed. And then they went and hired a firm to go find that person. And they spent a year doing it. And, and so the, you know, it's, it's, it's my recommendation that we, we identify an, an interim superintendent that can continue the path and the trajectory that we're on to allow us the time to focus on developing a strategy, developing a strategic plan. The finance committee is gonna meet for the first time on the thirtieth. We have fifteen individuals in the community that have varied expertise in finance, in business, in education, who will also be able to contribute. In addition to that, we can put together a variety of, of stakeholder groups in the community to help us to, 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 to develop this plan and strategy to take us to the next level. Because I think we're at that point. I think we have the financial resources. I think we have the infrastructure with the new schools that are being built, the renovations that have been completed and those that will soon be completed. So we have a lot to offer teachers, administrators, executives, to come to this district and propel us to the level that Dr. Green and her administration pointed us to. But to do that, I do believe we need an interim on July first that is going to, to provide for the least amount of disruption. We have a number of, of principals and leaders that are going to, to Harvard this summer for the program. I think in the end of June. And so we're, 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 and, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I feel so strongly that we are in a, a great position with a solid foundation and, and, and I think the goals are in sight. And, and the reason why I would like to target the twelfth is I'm concerned that if we put this decision too far out there, we're going to be exposed to intense lobbying that possibly could create some disruption and division that I don't think we're ready for. And, and that's why I wanted to allow enough time for us to have a discussion so we, so we understood kind of where, where our, our thought process is. And, and keeping in mind that at, at this critical juncture, we really have to set aside any kind of personal ideologies. This is the time when we must focus on the organization, the health and the viability of the School District of Manatee County. We have, we, we, look, we have come off of a pretty challenging year, but we've ended it on a very high note. I mean, we have done what no other county has done in this state. And so we're ready. But it's going to take all of us working together, focusing on a common goal and the good of the organization. And, and so, you know, with that being said, any additional thoughts on, on the timeline, on the process? I like what you brought up, Mr. Kennedy?
No, I, I, that, I, I have no problem with all of that, the timeline. The one, the one piece that I differ with you on, and I, I don't know where the rest of the board is, but I really think that, well, number one, as far as mandating that staff below the superintendent, giving them reading assignment, I'm not really sure that that's our, that's our, I think it's a great idea, but.
I wasn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a unilateral decision.
Okay.
Okay, so it was not a unilateral decision?
And I'm okay with it.
Okay, no, 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 no. Giving it out to you was my suggestion, it wasn't a unilateral decision, okay?
That I think is appropriate.
All right.
It's not in order.
And I'm, I'm fine with it, I've already finished half my summer reading assignment then anyway, so I only have one book to read. But I, I think the, the, the whole process of the, the five-year plan and where do we want to go, I think all of that should wait until the new board is seated. Again, just, just, I, it's, it's a different way of looking at it. But I, I think our job right now, and I, Cologne, Mr. Cologne has a, has a point about, you know, don't worry about public input, it's up to the five of us. But I, I think all of this should wait, and we, the five of us or the public with input, then, then we choose however you want to do it. But all we do is kind of ride out till Christmas break and make a decision then when that new board is seated. And I, and I said this over the weekend, that I don't think it's fair for me to put a whole bunch of effort into this process about what should go into the next superintendent if I'm not gonna be here, because the person who potentially replaces me may have a completely different take. And they're, they're gonna be the person who has to work with the superintendent.
Right.
So I, I just wanted to throw that out there. But yeah, but, but as far as intense lobbying, it has been intense over the past three days. And, and rightfully so, because people are passionate about this and, and people have strong ideas, so that's all, just a different way of looking at it.
And the way to mitigate that is if this board does find a common direction or a majority direction, is to make that decision.
Sure.
Mr. Minor?
Well, I, I think the solution to address Mr. Kennedy's issue and concern that the new superintendent, they have board members who are making the decision, who are going to be there, you know, suggests that it should be just Mrs. Messenger and I who decide who the next superintendent is gonna be. I know she's, you know, very capable of making wise decisions, and I think that, you know, together we could make a great choice. That, that addresses the problem.
Okay, there you go, there, problem solved.
So, so is that on the record, Mr. Minor and Ms. Messenger will be choosing the next superintendent?
Take the summer off and we'll, we'll get somebody really good.
Very good, I got out of reading a book.
Yeah, you got out of reading a book.
The person has the most experience. Dr. Green, any suggestions for the board?
I will give you one suggestion, and it's not a suggestion, it actually was Mr. Minor's suggestion three years ago. That whoever you put in as interim, they can't apply for the permanent position. Therefore, now you have nothing, that person is just helping to transition.
Makes sense.
And if that, if that person says, okay, I will be the interim, it's very clear. Do you remember saying that, Mr. Minor?
I, I think we eliminated somebody.
Then how did Dr. Green, how did Dr. Green get into that position? Wait a second.
Yeah, how did that work for you?
Did that not work out?
I, I remember some exciting moments, deciding who is gonna be the interim.
Wait a second, wait, so obviously you didn't take that advice.
No, no, I did not, I did not.
The board didn't take Mr. Minor's advice, because otherwise you wouldn't be the.
No, they did.
We're, we're talking.
I was not the interim.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they did.
Oh, that's right, you were the number two.
I was the number two, and they hired an interim.
Oh, right, right.
And that person could not apply for the final position. So, yeah, let's not.
Let's not go back, let's not go back to the history.
But it is an option that.
Well, I think, I think that's what Duval did also.
They did also, and that interim did not apply for the position.
The, and we had several people drop out of candidacy for interim, you know, because of that. And we ended up getting Dave Gaylor. No, no, we had Dave Gaylor, wasn't it?
Well, in my case, it was Don Hall.
Okay, Don, yeah.
Mr. Hall said he would not apply.
Right.
Yes, I think it was before that.
Yeah.
So, I, I think to try to close, close this out, is, is the board comfortable with Mr. Dai at least preparing an, an agreement for a yet-to-be-named interim superintendent? So should we identify someone? We will already be in a position to, to, to bring an agreement forward. And, and with that, we can have one with a, a provision that restricts the interim from applying to be the superintendent, and then an agreement without that provision. So at least we have, we have it in place.
My personal feeling is just go with the former, that the person who is the interim cannot apply to be.
Okay.
I live to speak, just to say the exact same thing. I agree it should be, if you are the interim, you cannot apply.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Mr. Minor?
I, I would encourage, and I probably doesn't need any encouragement, that Mr. Dai consult with the FSBA that does this on a regular basis as to what are suitable terms for an interim. And I'm, I'm sure our friends in FSBA have a list of.
And Andrew Vassina, I spoke today.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yep, you're, you're right on track, you're right on track.
I would suggest you still draw up both contracts.
It's not that difficult.
Yeah, I know.
We might even get a two-for-one pricing on it. Any other further comments? Is there a motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved.
Second, yeah. All right, show the workshop adjourned, thank you.